I hear why I called the board. You need to still just pick out your school board. This is Hutchinson, would you please call the board?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Good evening, Mr. Gambiani?
I'm here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Broman?
Here. Mr. McElroy, do you lead us in pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing to approve, to open the public hearing on the 2017-18 budget. I ask for a motion of second to open the public hearing on 2017-18 budget.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Sure.
Seconded by Mr. Matheson, Hutchinson, would you please call the board?
Mrs. Crabtree? Yes. Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes, the motion passes. We have, we have one individual signed up to speak on the proposed budget for 2017-18. It's Jan Shaw. Would you please limit your comments to three minutes, Ms. Shaw?
Would you like to turn on? Turn on? Okay, I am Jan Shaw. I have spoken out the last couple of months, several times, on this, on several things. One, we have 50 administrators whose contracts were open end of June and they're still working off-contract. I noticed they're going to be on the thing tonight, I'm sure it's in the budget for them, to have the same salaries as last year, same benefits as last year. The problem is, 2001 to 2010, our expenses went up much faster than inflation. In 2010, we had some layoffs, we increased student fees, we did away with esports, there was threats to do away with band and orchestra and gifted programs. And somebody pointed out the fact that we have all these administrators getting all these goodies in their budgets or in their contracts that other people don't get. None of that was cut, it's still there. The 50 top administrators still have their pensions picked up by the taxpayer. That's 9.8% of their base salary. The only reason to do that rather than making it part of their base salary is to hide it. Okay? Their total salaries around $6 million. Their pension pickups about $600,000. That would go a long way towards something like a sports team or perhaps building maintenance? Just a thought. They also do not pay as much in for their other healthcare benefits and stuff. They pay 10% to just pay 20%. Most in the real world are paying about 30%. And then we have this thing called, we used to do salary spiking, which never should have existed. They were giving people 20% last year of work. I don't know how far back that goes. The legislatures bring that into that and they changed it to you can't do more than 6% in the last four years. The district started giving four years at 6%, which spikes the pension by almost as much as that 20% went into year. About the same. Okay, 2012, this district finally did away with that because you literally couldn't afford it. They replaced it with a lump sum end-of-care bonus. We can't afford that either. If you look at it, last year there was only $25,000 or so budgeted for that. But recall, the last people who did that end-of-care salary spike retired in 2016. Going forward, you can expect somewhere at least, I'm guessing around $600,000 per year with that end-of-care bonus. It needs to come out of the administrators' contracts this year. There's nothing in it for the students to give somebody a lump sum as they're walking out the door. Especially when you consider the fact that end-of-care people have the highest salaries and they will have a starting pension that exceeds what the new teacher replaces them will have as a starting salary. They also get their 3% cost of living adjustment every year once they've turned 60. And we just raised everybody else's taxes, including that new teacher, by 32% to pay for the increase for the folks who are no longer working. Something here has to change. Now, I realize what I'm talking about now is part of the real agenda while we approve those contracts, but it needs to be thought about now when we're doing the budget. You should put about a million more into the buildings so that you don't have to come back to us so soon for another referendum. It's going to fail until you take care of some of this other stuff. And in order to do that, you probably need to pull about a million dollars out of the education budget. I don't want it coming from students, I'd like it coming from the administrators. I'll also point out, we didn't have a PR department until Ms. Loacklina was hired by Dr. Harris. She puts out a weekly memo.
Three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
We have no one else signed up for public comments on the budget. I therefore ask for a motion of second to close the public hearing on the 2017-18 budget.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hamlin.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the board?
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes, the motion to close the public hearing is passed. Next item on the agenda, are there any modifications to the agenda? We've already made one modification pursuant to request a board member, Mr. Gambiani. Are there any other modifications requested?
We haven't made that yet.
What's wrong with that, so I was only mentioning?
It's not been objected to, requested.
Mr. Gambiani, I assume you are still making that request?
Yes, please. I'd like to, I'd like to move item 15 from the consent agenda item list to action items, please.
Are there any other modifications requested? Hearing none, we'll move to public comments on agenda items. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on an agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district and public input in a variety of venues. It's very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decor of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name and your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Board member, Mr. Hamlin, will keep you faculty to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board's staff. And if you feel in a manner needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat or present your comments to us in writing. First person we have, two people signed up, I guess, shared the three minutes. This is Brandon Dunlap and Tyler Cook.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for recording this opportunity. My name is Brendan Dunlap. At a previous board meeting, you've had a lacrosse board president, a varsity coach, a player and a parent speak on behalf of lacrosse. Now Tyler and I would like to speak to you on behalf of alumni from the Wheaton North Lacrosse and the Wheaton Memorial South Tigers Lacrosse Clubs. I started playing lacrosse at the age of 11 in the first season of the Wheaton Park District program. We only had a six-game schedule that first year. The following year, we had a full schedule. And the year after that, we had two full rosters and both teams had full schedules. I went on to play at Wheaton North where I was a varsity captain and a Class B state champion. And then I was recruited to play at the Division I level at Lafayette College, where I was selected as a captain in my senior year. I returned home after I graduated, started a career in finance, first trust portfolio right in downtown Wheaton. And I was also on the coaching staff of Wheaton North this past season.
Hi everyone, my name is Tyler Cook. And I started playing lacrosse with Brandon in the Park District. And then I went on to play at Wheaton Memorial South. At Wheaton Memorial South, I was a varsity captain during my senior year and I helped lead our team to a top-five finishing state. I was then recruited to play Division I lacrosse at High Point University, where I was captain two years. And I was the first student athlete in the lacrosse program to graduate with a 4.0 GPA, earned the honor of Academic All-American. And throughout my lacrosse connections, I received an internship working in a Parkinson's disease research lab at Central Page Hospital. And this has helped me get into graduate school, where I'm now a PhD student at Loyola in Maywood. And I'm currently a student and still coaching lacrosse.
The two of us and everyone here who came out in support are all showing support to bring on lacrosse as a varsity sport in the district. The administration has worked collaboratively with the three club presidents to come to a consensus on how to make this happen. We hope you will vote in favor of the recommendation brought to you before by the administration.
It is our hope that you guys can see the support of lacrosse throughout this community and find a way in the near future to fully support the sport of lacrosse in the district. And we want to ensure that every student athlete that has the desire to play lacrosse will have that opportunity and be able to compete at the highest level at their high school. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our next speaker is Jan Shaw.
Sorry, I get to do it twice. Sorry, I'll make it quick. We need to cut back some of the administration, let me see if I can go with this. Another thing, about a year ago, I came before this board, I put in a Freedom of Information Act and asked for the celebrations that the district is paying for, for the staff. A friend of mine put it in again and we got the results of that yesterday, I have not had a chance to go through it. But I see we're still spending money for retirement dinner at Cantigny that the board members and certain administrators go to, plus any retiree. We're still giving out gifts to retirees and anniversary gifts. And the problem with this is, state law says public funds for public purpose only. I'd like to know, what is the public purpose of throwing parties with the adults in a school system? What does that do for our students? We've spent a lot of money on it. When I was going with the Communications Department, that used to be a school newsletter and a school report card each once a year. That's what we got from the district. It is now a weekly memo via email. There's some stuff that comes via the mail. She hires consultants to bring together committee members. And it all seems to be aimed toward getting the committee softened up so we'll open our wallets and pay more. The truth of the matter is, we want good schools, we're willing to pay for good schools. We're not willing to play for the bloat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Broman. Just a couple of things this evening that I wanted to provide the board with an update on. First is a thank you, a little earlier this morning, Mr. Broman helped us kick off our new teacher. Meeting in District 200, we welcomed about 50 new teachers that will begin their careers with us. Dr. Rammer and the Human Resource Staff in conjunction with some of our other district leaders really put together an amazing day of learning to make sure that next Wednesday, when students show up, our 50 new staff members are ready to go and ready to continue to offer the learning programs we have in the district. So thank you to the board for that. I did also want to thank the board for your support of professional development. I asked Faith Dahlquist to just put together a quick summary for me of a week of learning and I want to remind you that we put on week of learning, teachers attend week of learning at no cost. They do it on their own because they're interested in advancing their skill and making sure that they're ready for the upcoming school year. We offered a week of learning classes for teachers in June, June 2, and again on August 9th and 10th, 14th and 15th of this year. Offered about 36 different professional development sessions over that five days. Had just shy of 300 teachers, attend week of learning and then another 140. Staff members had attended a full-day training by Kate Cincella, who's a national consultant that helps us address issues around reading, especially for students that come to us with second language challenges or needs within schools. And so, thank you to Faith, thanks to everybody in District 200 that helped provide some extra professional development opportunities over the summer. I listed in, or put inside of your green folder, a little card that I just want to make sure that board members saw. Either I or members of our senior leadership team are going to be at each of the, I think there are about 28 open houses coming up over the next three to four weeks that we're going to be at to also help welcome and greet parents as they come in for that important communication. We've got a little handout that we're just going to distribute to share some information with parents about a new mobile app that will be a part of our communications program this year. That mobile app was at no cost to the district, it came as a part of the work that we do through our website. But I think it's going to be a great opportunity for parents and for community members to be able to access important information around calendars, schedules, eventually grades, access to all of the online tools, but they'll be able to do it directly through their phones in a mobile app. Also going to be sharing with our community, a Welcome Back to School video contest that we put together and then an invitation to our State of the Schools meeting, which is going to take place on September the 20th. Two more things, very quickly. I just wanted to remind the board that a week from Friday is the Crosstown Classic Football game. You will get your cards and parking voucher for that game, but I think this is maybe the third year bill that we've come right out of the gate with North-South game. So this year it's at Wheaton Memorial South. So put that down on your calendar if it's not already. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention is, as of just before this meeting, saw a couple of updates come through, there really still has not been significant movement around the school funding legislation that certainly is still caught up on the governor's mandatory veto. What that does mean, I just want to share practically, is that we have not, so until that bill is passed, we will not receive a dollar from the state of Illinois this year. They have already missed their first payment due to all schools in Illinois. With today's, I guess, lack of action, we will definitively miss the second payment as well. There's no chance that they will have a payment ready to go to schools by the end of the month. So we will be at the earliest into September before any school in the state of Illinois gets money. And that's amid a reminder you got a little bit earlier this evening that that income tax rate did still go up. So there's money going, it's just not coming back out to schools until some sort of legislation around that school funding bill gets passed one way or another. So that was a quick update on that. Any questions from board members?
Did we get our fourth categorical? We got the third one, correct? We do not get the fourth.
Yeah, so we, I think as a last update to the board, we were still owed just shy of $6 million from last year as well. We got one of those two payments, we got about $2.6 million in. So there is still one outstanding payment from last year as well. That's, again, just shy of $3 million.
Same question.
Any other questions from board members, if I'm sure?
Just to reiterate, what percentage of our revenue and operational funds comes from state?
We receive about $18 million and I think around 11% on operational.
Any other questions for Dr. Schuler? Thank you, Dr. Schuler. We now move to the consent agenda. And please bear with me as I read each consent agenda item. Number one, acceptance of grant from Echo Lab to Hawthorne Elementary School. Two, acceptance of gifts from Madison PTA. Three, acceptance of gifts from Monroe PTA. Four, acceptance of gifts from Wheaton Memorial South High School Tiger Paws. Five, acceptance of gift to the vocational staff of the transition program and Wheaton North High School program. Six, approval to post-revised policy 2.260, uniform grievance for public review and comment. Seven, approval to administer PSAT 8/9 and PSAT 10 assessments. Eight, approval of annual certification of serious yet serious safety hazardous bus routes. Nine, approval to dispose of surplus assets. Ten, approval of occupancy permits and statements of completion for the Regional Office of Education. Eleven, approval of resolution approving travel, meals and lodging policies. Twelve, approval to recognize lacrosse as a high school sport under a fully funded parent agreement. Thirteen, approval of bills payable and payroll. Fourteen, approval of minutes, July 12, 2017, open and closed. An approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to March 2016 as allowable by law. Fifteen, approval of personnel report to include, oh, that's, we moved that to action item, I apologize for that. Are there any items, any additional items the board members want to move from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments on the consent agenda. One, the first four items, approval of gifts. As you have those up, that's about $55,000 in very generous gifts to the district. So thank you very much to the Tiger Paws and to our PTA groups. Thank you as well to our staff that continue to go out and seek grant opportunities to enhance our programs. Second thing, I just wanted to make a quick comment under number 12. We have quite a gallery of visitors here that we so appreciate, certainly your interest in the district. Dr. Rammer and I had the great pleasure of working with Michelle and Cory, who I know is not here, and Liz, Michelle and Liz are certainly here. As we have worked through some of the challenges of figuring out an agreement to bring to the board the recommendation this evening that you recognize lacrosse as a program the board is well aware of. The challenges certainly that we've got within the district, the board is well aware of. The fact that we are digging deeper into the whole issue of fees for activities through the fall. Yet the reality is, had you not agreed to put this on your agenda this evening, there's an opportunity that would have been lost for students in District 200. So I do thank members of the lacrosse committee for working with us so diligently to make that happen. And certainly, it's with pleasure that I make that recommendation this evening.
On that point, as a personal privilege, it was 15 years ago that Jamie and Chris Reed recruited my son, Tom, to play lacrosse for the Wheaton Memorial South High School Club. He played goalie for three years, I mean, he's actually all-state, junior and senior year. And Susan and I chaired the Parents Lacrosse Club at Wheaton Memorial South that senior year and we hosted the state tournament between New Trera and La Grange at Wheaton Memorial South High School. It's come a long way, guys. And I'm so proud and happy to see us here tonight with this development. And Tom played lacrosse at Purdue with Chris Reed on the club sport there. Not quite Division I, but it was pretty good, pretty good plan to lacrosse, particularly when they played Indiana. That was a tough, that was a tough game. That was a tough game, a lot of hard work. So congratulations, Donovan.
Did Indiana win?
No.
Can I make a statement on lacrosse as well? I want to thank you guys for coming to talk to us, really appreciate it. I want to thank the parents for making us aware of this and explaining, you know, how passionate you are and your kids are about the sport and for working with the district to try and find a way, especially at a time when we're really struggling with finances in the district, to be able to bring on a new sport. I have a question, just for clarification for myself and just for the public in general. We're proposing that it come on as a fully parent-funded activity. Has there been a conversation about the long term? Is this a one-year deal? Is this, how is that working?
Certainly that agreement is, it's a year-to-year agreement. We've not had any conversation, Jenna, about at what point in the future that may change. Again, I think the board is having a discussion later this fall through the Finance Committee around fees for all activities. And I appreciate the question, I think it'd be premature to try to answer that question in advance of that discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members, from Dr. Schuler or the staff? Hearing none, I ask for a motion of second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the board?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes, the consent agenda passes, all items on the consent agenda.
There it is, it's not going into there.
There's no school tomorrow, you're all going to stay here. Hey, bros, we're not done.
Yeah, we are.
All right, now we, we do move to action items. The first action item is the approval of the resolution approving adjustment to superintendent's employment contract. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, I don't, no real additional comments on that other than I think what will be now your second action item this evening. I believe or anticipate that the board is going to be taking action to freeze administrative salaries. And so I have a multi-year contract with the board, but offered to the board to freeze my salary as well. And so I think, Mr. Broman, as you spoke, the attorney suggested that the board memorialize that and free agreements, so that's what the resolution is.
That's correct, when Jeff announced that he was going to freeze his salary, the potential action we're going to be taking out adjusted contract salaries, I called our school board attorney, Joe Plakowski, and asked him for guidance and direction on what, if anything, we need to do about that to memorialize. And he recommended to enact a resolution. He drafted the resolution, we modified it a little bit to mirror some elements of Jeff's contract that protects the genesis of the resolution that's now before us. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Therefore, I ask for a motion of second to approve the resolution approving the adjustment to superintendent's employment contract as presented. Is there a motion and second?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the board?
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
No.
Mr. Matheson?
No.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes, the resolution passes and is adopted. Second action item is the item removed from the consent agenda. Second action item is the item removed from the consent agenda, which is approval of personnel report to include employment, reservation, retirement, leave, or absence of administrative, certified classified, non-union staff. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Broman. The personnel report was attached to the agenda, the first item in the personnel report, which is the approval of contracts, are the administrative contracts. I do want to point out to the board and certainly to anybody watching the meeting this evening that we have updated the personnel report. We did that a little bit earlier today so that the personnel report reflects both the base salary of the administrators and any board contributed either TRS or IMRF contribution. Most of your administrators are TRS eligible employees, but you do have some that are IMRF employees. And so, we've listed the base salary, whatever that contribution is, and then the total salary that that employee deserves. So, that's just one minor change to the personnel report that was made a little earlier today at the request of a board member.
Before I ask for comments and questions from board members, I do want to remind you, board member, that of course, we've discussed administrative contracts in two closed-session meetings. I would ask that everyone give whatever statement of position they want, but I see no need to go back and forth on matters since we went back and forth on matters during the closed session. But I don't want to inhibit anybody from saying what they want to say. But that's the format I would like this to follow, too. So, are there any comments?
I have a couple. Most school districts, I should say, the state of Illinois, provide pension benefits for their administrators. Am I correct in saying that? Roughly the same as what we're currently doing? Is that common practice of our surrounding benchmark districts?
Certainly of our benchmark districts, yes.
And same with healthcare and those opportunities?
Since I asked to have that moved to action, the only element that I really had an issue, not an issue with, but what I wanted to make a statement on was specifically the administrator contract. And I guess, first of all, I do want to thank the administrators for accepting the salary freeze for the 2018 year, school year. However, I still have concerns about the generous benefits that remain within the contract. And so, you know, just making some comments here, in 2017, 18, district contributions to TRS will exceed $600,000. Healthcare benefits paid by the district will approach $850,000. And individual post-employment compensations can be as high as $25,000. And quite frankly, in any setting, these benefits are far and away better than most. And based on the financial challenges facing the district, including funding needed for capital improvements and building maintenance, these benefits, in my opinion, should have been reviewed and adjusted prior to the contract being approved tonight. But with that, those are my only comments, and thank you.
Any other comments from board members?
I just think that the, you know, the presentation that's now a public document that we've had attached to the agenda, you know, provides a clear and open understanding of what compensation is. It discusses these issues, and I think it's, you know, as we move forward in the next year's budget, we want to address some of the topics that Mr. Gambiani just referred to. But we're already a month and a half into the, you know, the 2018 year administrative contracts, which are basically frozen. And these changes here that show up on here is really a disclosure of the entire compensation. And it's not saying that it's overpaid, underpaid, whatever. They are just the fact, these are the numbers. So, I think, again, it's a good, open presentation, and I appreciate that document being put in.
Any other comments from board members?
Yeah, this is not a simple process. I guess, from my lens, it's initiative we didn't take lightly. I feel comfortable with this. It's not, I didn't want to make a knee-jerk reaction that, you know, was kind of a response to a few people. This is a really complicated issue in light of everything we have to deal with at the state and on a local level. And, you know, the pressure not to cut the legs out from the 10th-rated school district in the state of Illinois. So, you know, I think all these decision points must be on the table in the future. We have to create a balanced plan that, you know, minimizes the impact on students, the leaders, and the community. So, it's a tough decision, you know. We need to get all these things on the table in the future, and to try to make a quick decision right at the start of the school year, I thought would be very difficult. So, I'm comfortable with the decision we made as kind of a, what I've said, as a soft landing that kind of sets up a much deeper analysis going forward in the context of all the other issues we have to deal with over the next four to six months or so. So, that's kind of my perspective on it.
Any other comments from board members? If I may, I introduced the concept of the salary freeze after discussion with Dr. Schuler about it, and was added the idea of some suggestions from Mrs. Crabtree and Mrs. Erickson, that we have the HR policy committee kind of beginning a review of these administrative contracts and the benefits beginning in January to see what, if anything, we can adjust. In years past, it's been our practice to raise a limit before the board in closed session, the administrative contracts in June of that year, and generally follow the recommendation of the superintendent. This year, we've encountered some differences. We went through a referendum session, and we vote on that. And we're still, as a board, trying to decipher what the community was trying to tell us as a result of the referendum. Dr. Schuler has referenced the turmoil that exists down in Springfield over SB 1, school financing. And we have heard during the course of the last year or more such potential challenges as pension shift obligations from state town to the school districts, property tax freezes, and then, of course, the debate that's going over the implementation or passage of SB 1. Added on that, we adopt in January the Sherman Durges policy. We do have certain critical capital needs that we need to address. And all of that is a full plate. That prompted, I think, many of us to say, let's take a step back, let's put a freeze on where we're at and take a good, hard look. But what it is not, it is not any expression, at least on my part, with any dissatisfaction whatsoever with our administrators, just the opposite. I think our administrators are doing a fantastic job as we've graded it as the 10th-best school district in the state. Knowing what's going on in our buildings and our classrooms, I'm just as pleased as I can with the job that all of our administrators are doing, whether it's the senior leadership team or down in the buildings. But I think we owe it to ourselves, and most importantly, we owe it to our residents and our constituents to kind of keep things in place and do a thorough study of this issue so that we can come up with a meaningful and thoughtful approach next year. And that's the reason I'm going to support the section item. Any other comments? Hearing now, I have motion and second to approve the personnel report to include employment, reservation, retirement, leave, or absence of administrative, certified classified, non-union staff.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
No.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes, the motion to approve the personnel report is, you know, has passed. Next item on the agenda are our poll reports. We have a fundraising feasibility study update. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, and I'm going to reintroduce Mr. John Bruce, who's here with the board. John was at your meeting a month ago to give an interim update and is here tonight to provide the board with a summary of your report and, I think, reference for the board, a little bit more detailed document that you're also going to give that actually goes a little bit deeper into potential options around the capital campaign. So, Bruce?
Thank you very much. Dr. Schuler, it was good to talk about the study and the study results. You have the document in front of you, and the feasibility study document that you have in front of you contains, we think, a great deal of information regarding kind of general directions that we're recommending and descriptions to move forward and to move forward into a program seeking private gift and grant support. And in our confidential report, which is supplemental to the document you have, we are, we're also providing specific information on prospect names, on estimates of giving ranges. We have insights, in many cases, on specific strategies to cultivate and eventually solicit gifts and grants. And the prospect lists that result from the feasibility study often serve as kind of the initial campaign list that is used as time goes by for discovering donors and leaders. Process worked, and the process was in developing these two reports. We've gotten the information that we had hoped for and were pleased to pass that on. Couple of quick qualitative comments I'd like to make, one being that I think it's important to know that the interviewees that we talked to highly value this district. And there's a, I mean, they had their concerns, they had their, they had their pluses and minuses. As we were looking at selecting interviewees, we wanted contrarians, we wanted people who would give us an open look and give, share with us their opinions. And there's no doubt that they did. We got, we got a bunch of really good information, and our job as we're doing interviews is to try to get a balance on what people are saying. And so, I think that, as I mentioned, the first qualitative comment is that, is that people value this district, and you can, I think you can be proud of that. Secondly, interviewees value the lifestyle in the Wheaton community. And this includes not only, not only the District 200, but also their faith values. And if they could, if they can afford to return to Wheaton as they, as they get older, they would like to. And we've heard that many times from people who had, whose kids were hoping that someday they would, they would come back to their home community. And when we pursued that, it's why, again, the school district and the quality of it was very, very strong. And the best example I can give you is that many of the interviewees who are graduates of this system, as well as their kids, they feel good about what they experienced, they've done well as they've moved on to, into other sectors of higher education, and it's been a, it's been a kind of successful life experience, which I would think would be something that this board would strive for all the time. So, that was, that was another positive. We also found that leaders were very much in favor of collaboration. For example, the idea of the district partnering with the Wheaton Park District on projects was viewed very favorably as both organizations are publicly supported through taxes. So, again, people saw this, and I'll talk a little bit more about collaboration in just a second, but that, too, was a, was a positive point I wanted to mention. As we talk about fundraising, though, I think it's very important to note that the concept of District 200 raising private gifts and pledges is truly looked upon favorably. And interviewees saw this as the, as administrators and board thinking outside the box because it isn't done in every district throughout the state. It isn't, it isn't done as often as one would think. And so, the idea of it was well received, again, particularly by interviewees who said, we've got to do what we can to increase our sources of revenues, and this, this makes perfectly good sense as a way to not, not replace what we're doing, but supplement what we're doing. They also saw a successful, ongoing fundraising program being clearly beneficial to the communities that are being served by the district. And as I mentioned, they see it as a supplement and not a replacement. We talked, we talked and listed a variety of items that could be capital projects or could be, or we discussed potential academic programs. And truthfully, our interviewees didn't really possess a great deal of knowledge about those because one of the things that we wanted to ask is, which project would you support and why? What would you give? What do you think would excite you to support financially? And I think that it was very important that the response in general was that interviewees want to know, want to know what the district seeks. What, you people are the pros. What do, what does the district need to make a difference in the lives of students, to make things more conducive for the education process for educators and others? They want to focus on the needs versus the wants. And when something is shown that it's very, very important to the district and to the schools and to the students, people will respond favorably. They'll have, they'll have to be explained to them, however. And so, any fundraising project, and this is true of organizations that have been raising funds for decades, you've got to have a, the donor has to have a clear picture of what he or she is funding for, before they're going to consider a pledge, a gift of significance. And early childhood learning is a solid, solid example. If, you know, our suggestion, as we've talked to people about this, is pretty clear. We think that you probably don't want to, as a district, go back with the same plan that you had in the two referendums. People would respond rather negatively to that. But if there's a way to focus on a new way to go about achieving your goals, they'll listen, they'll, they'll want to hear that. Again, it's perceived as a, as thinking outside the box and coming up with, by coming up with new ideas. Folks want to focus on outcomes, describe why early childhood education is essential. We've sat, we've suffered from a lack of clarity. Folks don't get it. They don't understand, and it takes, it takes repetition of the message again and again and again for that to, for that to get home. And that's not just here, that's, that's in every community. So, that's, that's very, that, you know, if you understand state requirements, if you understand mandates, if you understand why you have to do this, you didn't do it 20 years ago in their minds. So, that whole educational process is key. The idea of collaboration, as I mentioned, I wanted to give you a specific example of what's looked upon favorably. If you can show an, or show a group of donors or prospects that collaboration is important, and it's exhibited by three things, the district having, having funds set aside for a project, not the whole, not the whole package, but a, a set amount, that's a sign of good stewardship, it's a sign of good planning, and that's seen as a positive, as a positive step. Tied in with collaboration with organizations like the Park District, and then tied in through private gifts and grants. Doing all three makes a huge impact, and again, that's what donors are, that's what major gift donors are seeking. And we think it's also important with, with not only early childhood learning, but to seek upfront donors who are, who will provide some initial gift support, who are willing to get involved as leaders, who are willing to speak up on how important this is, and provide leadership for a campaign. Campaign is really nothing more than a highly organized effort to bring people and donors together who are focused on specific goals, outcomes, and timelines. So, we want, we want to have those kinds of folks, and that's how a good campaign gets started, with, with people upfront, providing, providing support that at some point in time can be announced to the public and, and set the stage for a more sophisticated campaign. In our opinion, we think that a, we think that this district can raise money. How much could you raise? Well, you know, that's, that was a real debatable issue for a long time in our process because people didn't, didn't identify with a specific project. They said, tell us what's most important. But what was very clear is that when we, when we talked about ranges that people thought were very doable in the Wheaton community, it's, and when we look, when we look at other, other giving in the community, other giving history, demographics, it, it was very clear to us that the, that the funds are here, and the question is, can we identify a package and present it in such a way that people will respond favorably? We think that a goal on a project that's in the, in the range of $3 to $4 million would be, would be a doable goal, that would not scare people away, and it would provide with a, with a relatively large amount of money to... provide with a, with a relatively large amount of money to, to in fact go after when you have no history of that kind of, or you have minimal history of that type of private funding. So that's where we would think, starting off in that, in the three to four, perhaps as much as four and a half million dollar range would, would make a lot of sense. Once the first campaign at that range is successful, then you have the opportunity to, to grow that. And I know that our recommendation is always for organizations to, you guys always have needs and it's a matter of continuing on year after year. It would be normal for a campaign of, of the magnitude to raise three and a half, four, four and a half million dollars to take 14 to 18 months. That would not be the least bit unusual or out of line. And, and the fees for the kinds of services that you need, whether it's brochures, videos, campaign, strategic planning council, whatever, are, as I mentioned at the last meeting, usually taken out of the, out of the proceeds coming in. So the campaign is not a net negative and it's not a burden, it's paid for out of the gifts and grants that are, that are solicited. And that's not a secret. That's, that's, that's always open and transparent. We think that the next step then is to, for something like this, if you were so inclined to move forward, would be to agree on purpose, determine how much you need to, to raise, create a campaign plan that has the ingredients of a, with a timeline, a PR plan, cultivation and solicitation plans. In the document, in the report document on page 12, we prepared a four million dollar campaign gift table. And that shows the number of gifts at a certain size and that have to be raised to hit a, in this case, a four million dollar goal. A chart like that's really important because you take a look at it and say, "Ah, we're gonna, we're gonna need four gifts of a quarter of a million dollars. Where are we gonna get that? Who are our prospects? What do we have to do to introduce more people to that idea?" And it's a little bit like eating the elephant one bite at a time. You look at that, you look at those four gifts, you begin, you begin a, a pretty typical process of evaluation. And I would add that the kinds of, the kinds of documents in our, the names enlisted in our confidential report will help, help direct us in that, in that way extensively. So with that, I would say that, that the other aspect to, to the good campaign plan is that, is leaders, we have leaders identified as well, people who we interviewed, people who have been involved with the district, people who value the district and who value the community, who openly said they would be, they would get involved in a campaign to help the district. Leaders do need to be recruited, that process needs to take place. So I want to, that's kind of the overview of what you find in our, the external document you have, as well as the confidential report. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to work with constituents, with your constituents. And I think that the folks who participated in the interview process had a good experience and I know that, I know that we did. I'd be open to any questions that you might have.
I have one question. In, in the campaign, is there ever times where people do say matching, where you can get smaller people, smaller, there's people who can give smaller amounts out there, but maybe somebody's willing to give a larger amount and willing to do that in matching? Is that a successful approach?
It's a, it's a great strategy. And it's one that, that we would, we would highly recommend and try, try to use in, in a campaign locally. It allows people who aren't going to be the major gift donors to contribute an amount and know that their gift is leveraged. So five hundred dollars might turn into a thousand with a matching, with a, with a matching gift program. And we always are looking for donors or small groups of donors who will create a match. Yes, sir?
I noticed you make a reference in your report here to the campaign that the Park District is doing for the Causeley Zoo. Do you think a, a campaign that we can initiate that can raise three and a half to maybe four and a half million dollars can be done even with that campaign, that campaign that's going on for the Causeley Zoo?
Yeah, I think it can. And I think that the, you know, we, we talked about that, saying, well, because we often see, there's always competition. There's always going to be another organization or two competing at the same time. And oftentimes, there's a, there's a core group of different donors that make, that make up the audiences of the organizations. We were real concerned about that because we think a lot of the donors would be the same. And so, so what it requires, and I'm, and I'm not sure exactly what their timeline is, but I do know this, for us to be, to be as successful as I believe we can, it's going to take a little bit of lead time to, to do the, to provide the explanations of our, of our goals and to get, make people more aware, because this is something that hasn't been done before. So we're gonna, we're gonna have a little time there and, and I think that will help immensely.
Just to comment on that, I was interviewed by your counterpart for the, for Causeley Zoo and they're, they're looking into Page County. And I walked in and I made kind of the same concern that they steal away from our people. But they, they have much broader base of attraction, even though it's pretty much funded by the, we, the Park District, and the, the Wheaton Park District, but their clientele is all of the Page County, so a little, little difficult.
I talked to their chair, chairman, I interviewed their, their, their campaign chairperson in this project and offered the suggestion that maybe we ought to do an event together and to bring people together and help make them aware of, of both campaigns. And I, I didn't mean that facetiously at all, but there was real, there was real openness to that and pursuing that kind of thinking because they are collaborative partners of yours. So I, I don't think that would be a crazy idea. Anyone else?
Quick comment on that, I think that's like a 10-year plan to raise, we're looking at 60 million dollars, something like that. So, but the, you mentioned like selecting a project is, is important to doing this. Was there any underlying suggestions about a project in any of your interviews?
People, and I know it sounds trite, if, if we can build a case on whatever is most important for the district and for, and for the constituents, I think people are gonna, people are gonna respond well, particularly if they understand the benefits to, to students and, and see the, see those opportunities for students grow. And so I, it's, it's, it's a soft answer, but it's, but it's, it's the honest one. If we can build a case for whatever it is, there's probably a good chance that we can build a successful campaign around it.
Then another follow-up is the, you mentioned there were comments for and against this process. And, you know, I, you know, the criticisms are the things that we try to address to improve our probability of success. Would those be shared with us in some way?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Everything is yours, all the information. And so, yes. I, I'd like to tell you that I think the, the, if there was any one concern that came up over time, it was, it was related to, people were still singing a little bit over referendum issues.
I serve on a few non-for-profit boards.
Yes, sir.
So fundraising is part of our deal, right? And there's nothing worse than a poorly run campaign for, for a project. So when you're talking about leaders, you're talking about the face of the campaign, rallying donors, looking for, out, out in front. But my assumption is that there's a strong administrative component behind the scenes helping do all the heavy lifting. Did you explore whether that's existing staff, consulting services, new, new hire? Have we talked about how we would actually execute that from the behind the scenes side? Not the face, but the behind the scenes?
Yeah, yeah. No, a good, a good question because you're absolutely right. There's all, there's always a, there's a team, there's, there's that, there's the backroom team that's, that's helping the, the front, the front row be successful. And, you know, we looked at it first and foremost, what would it, what will it take? And without having a specific project or size in mind, we didn't pursue it heavily. But I can, but I can tell you that it would, it would most likely be a combination and I think that, I think it'd be something that a firm like ours would help with and we typically do after, after studies. We know the organization about as well as anybody can at that point. And we didn't, we haven't really, and I haven't, as I, as I think about it, I have not thought yet about, about the addition, the addition of staff. I, I don't think, I don't believe that's going to be necessary. If we were going out after a 15 million dollar campaign, my, my comments would be different.
Understood. You talked about a confidential component which has names, I totally understand that. As we share this publicly, my, my bias would be to minimize as much as we can that's confidential, whether we just redact it and publish everything, but, but minimize that. I think the transparency would be critical to the success of any program, right? And so my, my direction would be minimize as much as we can that's confidential. And then third, which kind of ties back to my first question, have you talked, do you have guiding, guidelines for percent of the funds raised that would be towards running the campaign, serving, you know, all the materials, 10%, 20%? What do you typically budget for, let's say, a $5 million campaign?
Yeah, that's a great question. And, and we do have specific, specific numbers. They vary a little bit by type of organization from the perspective that for whatever it's worth, healthcare organizations tend to, and particularly hospitals, tend to have fundraising expenses in a campaign that can be upwards of 30% of the dollars raised. We think that's pretty terrible. I would venture to say that, that, that in a project here, we're probably looking at something that where all expenses would fall under, maybe it's a, it might be as high as, as 15%, but I wouldn't think it would be any more than that.
John, I'm being careful with my comments here, but I'm, I'm a little confused. Maybe I'm the only one at the table that is. When this board approved engaging you, I think that was in February, March or something thereabouts, it was my understanding that the role your firm would play would be identifying philanthropic people who are willing to step up and take part in activities. This report does not tell me that. You know, we spent over a half million dollars in the last three years doing community engagements and we have a lot of input. And again, I don't want to diminish your report, but we know a lot of this stuff already. And so my, maybe it was just a misconception on my part, but it was my understanding that your firm would bring to us identified, maybe not publicly, but identified people who said, "I'm in on that, I'm here for a half million dollars." So if I missed that whole thing, my apologies, but again, we have a lot of this information and this is not news to me anyway. And so I guess, did I miss that whole engagement component about identifying specific people in this community or outside this community who are willing to put their name on a, on a building and donate $5 million? Because that's what I thought your firm was kept, gonna bring to us.
The confidential report addresses that in a fairly decent, to a fairly decent manner. And with anybody, with any of the folks that we interviewed, we asked, we asked them about their giving, we asked them if they would support the district. So you'll be getting that information. Where, where it gets softer and softer is as you go out in concentric circles farther away from, from the Wheaton community. But when you, but in doing, in doing the interviews, not only did people talk about their own capabilities, but they talked about others that they felt should be engaged and, and in some cases at, at what levels. So, so I, I think that you're gonna see, you're gonna see much more of that.
So are you telling me that there's another list besides exhibit, pending to be?
Yeah, yeah. That's, I referred in my earlier comments to a confidential report. Yeah, that, the list you have in front of you are the names of the interviewees. What you don't have is with that, which you will, is the names of the interviewees, what they said they would give, who they recommended that we reach out to, what ballpark those folks might, might be perceived to be in, in terms of giving.
That's why I wanted to be careful with my comments.
Yeah.
I didn't want to be critical, I was just trying to make sure. I understood what the, the end game was when we started at the beginning, so thank you very much for your question.
And I just have one, one quick little clarification to that, John, both in fairness to you and certainly in fairness to the district as we authorize this. This is a feasibility study. So by no means, at least from my perspective, was the task, "Bring us $5 million worth of identified donations." This task was to identify, would it in fact be feasible to conduct a $5 million campaign? And obviously, part of that feasibility is identifying people that are potential donors and getting what might be a potential commitment for them. So even when you get that, that report, I think when the board gets that report, I only anticipate that you're gonna see $5 million, like people and potential donations are gonna add up to, to $5 million. But I think what you would certainly see is that if you do in fact choose to go this route, if you determine for whatever the project is, whether that's early learning, whether that's another need that's identified that you want to go this route, A, is it feasible? B, where, where would your core of support be to start that campaign and, you know, and take it out, you know, in a, in a much smaller scale? It's the same exact thing that we did with the incubator, although the business incubator, we're only talking 67, 60 or 70,000 dollars that we raised, but we went out first to a small group, got a couple of key donors that said, "Hey, I'm in for this amount." And then they went out and solicited others saying, "Hey, would you join me at a $7,500 donation or a $10,000 donation?" And, and that's same process, just obviously bigger numbers if we're talking about a four to $5 million piece. But, so I, I can appreciate the question and I knew that it was, was certainly going to, to come. And I think, Rob, I appreciate, I think, your, your thought on this as well and that I, I do want to be open and transparent if we go this route on what the feasibility is, yet I would be extremely uncomfortable at any point, especially now where you are, by suggesting that we're gonna at some point make public John's report of, "Hey, here are the specific people and the amount of money that, that they may choose to, to give." So it, it, I think it's a fine line in terms of truly being able to understand and evaluate true feasibility, yet, you know, obviously if we were running this campaign privately at this point, we would not be divulging to the public, here's our prospect list of 30 donors and how much money that they're potentially giving until, you know, you're further into that process where those individuals choose to say, "I want my donation recognized publicly."
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I didn't have any doubt that that was the case. It's not, it would be just poorly, poor performance, right? So I, I just want to minimize the amount of things we keep confidential. As a, as a general statement, for any kind of activity in the district around raising funds, promoting, whatever the case may be, that, that was my intended point. So you, you and I are 100% alive. Actually, I have one more question, if that's okay. Typically, what I've seen is that you have a percentage of your goal already attained prior to initiating a campaign or a public campaign. Do you have a guideline on what that 50% or 75%? Because the last thing you want is an uphill battle and fail.
Yeah.
What, what is that rough guideline?
Sure. We do. And we, and it's exactly why we follow kind of the process that we do. The, the number that we, that we stick with is, is right around, right about 60%. And if we can, once we, once we reach that 60%, we, we're, we're celebrating the excitement and the enthusiasm and the, the trends that are working our way. And we want to convey that to the public so that they'll join the, join the bandwagon, so to speak.
Thank you.
If I could add one other, one other comment to, to yours, it's exactly, it's exactly why we spend the time that we do on, on reputation, attitude, values, and why we want to hear how people feel about the district in, in detail, because they're the same folks that, that, we want, we want people feeling good. We want them feeling trustworthy of the district. We want to feel, feeling proud of the district. Because as we come up with a project, that, our, the task becomes one of, of turning that, turning those positive feelings into, into gift support or into leadership support. And so it's a, that's why we do follow a, a pattern like, like we have. And, and I would add that, you know, from a, from our perspective, if the process went well, interviewees were, were, were very open to saying, "Yes, we can, we'll, we'll be glad to do it, we'll participate." And I, I frankly found that, that for me, the exciting, one of the exciting parts was that as we went along and we did our first batch of interviews, we talked to people about and we asked them, "Who else should we be speaking with? Who else should we get engaged in this process? Who cares about, about the district?" And we got more names and those, those people were, were very gracious in getting involved and even though they hadn't been involved upfront as our first batch. So what happened was we were getting, we got a very, I think we got a good quality of individuals to, to participate. And we had, we have a fairly broad age range. We had a lot of people who, whose work is in the geographical area and they're very, very committed to the community and their kids are engaged in, in the district. Lots of, lots of folks have their, their children either have been, are in or have been in the district. So it was, I feel good about the, I feel good about the process. So it was, I feel good about the, I feel good about the process we did.
And to that point, how did, how did we land on these 25 interviewees? I mean, most everybody in this board probably knows nearly all of them. And so I'm intrigued by how this mix evolved and who these people, how these people were chosen, because they're pretty common names. And, you know, for me, I'd be probably looking somewhere else for some other names that aren't as, as traditional or well-known, and who know the ins and outs of, anyway, just me, I don't do these studies, you do, but what, how did we land on these 25 interviewees?
There were a variety of ways, and I think it's, I appreciate your comment on that because it kind of reinforces the fact that when you see a donor list for an organization, and Wheaton as an example, and you look to another organization, look at their donor list, you see a lot of the same people again and again and again. But the way we got them was, we first went out and talked with people that we know in the Wheaton community and said, and talked with them about the kind of folks we were looking for, people who had financial capability, people who were, who had, who were able to financially influence people, and we wanted some contrarians, and we got, we got a list of about, oh, I don't know, a fairly good-sized list of 70 or 80 people. From our conversations, Dr. Schuler and his team provided some names as well. So it, they came from a variety of sources. But then, we then did a mailing to each of them, inviting them to participate, and asking them to respond to a call. So we then, our office reaches out and calls to see if people will participate in, some do and some don't. But then with each interview that we, that we participate in, we ask folks, "Who else should be engaged in this process?" So we got some, I'm sure we got some friends recommending friends, but, but I think that from the standpoint of things that these people told us, I don't, I don't have many, there weren't many where I walked out and said, "Oh, that was a wasted hour." I mean, there may have been one, but that was about it.
One item, the, you know, this, this is, our agenda item here says fundraising feasibility study update. You made reference to a confidential list and so on. What is the process here? You know, we're, we're going to have shortly on our agenda here, we're going to be talking about some capital needs and issues that are going to be very significant to us, and this program will enter significantly into that. So I guess I'm trying to understand when we see, you know, what's the next step, and when do we see, you know, what I'll call reports or whatever versus updates?
Again, this, so probably the wrong tag on, on the agenda, I anticipate you're going to see very shortly the, that follow-up document that John referenced, and then it's going to be in the board's hands. So we certainly can choose to continue to engage John and his team, or solicit, you know, proposals from others if we choose to go this route, but I, but I think to your question, Jim is going to come back in the hands of the board to determine, do you in fact want to consider this as a funding option, and for what project, and then, you know, what, what might that look like? So that would come back to us to bring a recommendation to the board for how we advance that. So John will close out with certainly that confidential report that he, that I think he spoke about, spoke about, talked about, certainly will remain available to us as a reference or for additional, you know, questions or support, but I think then he'll come back to the board and determine, is this a program you want to consider tied into any of the projects that you are actively pursuing?
How close are we to having that report in my hands?
12, 12, 15 days, max.
Okay. So this is a comment, John, you can agree or disagree with me, but, you know, we keep talking about funding a project, but I had lunch with a school client yesterday who was finishing a project, and he talked about how they were able to create a menu of potential components of a project that they were able to go out to the community with and see what appeals to, you know, maybe, maybe not the numbers that are on this list, but things like, you know, somebody who was very concerned about the environment was able to support some environmental aspects of the building, support a playground, science program or particular elements. And this client said it was so important to have that menu that they could take to people, you know, beyond maybe the 30 or 70 people, they can say, "Hey, we're really looking to put this element into that project." And then they would just, you know, in that case, for a much, much smaller community, write a check, and they, they generated close to $500,000 in a very small community. So just, there's a project, and then there's the components to the project to get funded later on.
If I had the time to respond to that, I would, I would just say that we've had plenty of experiences, and one, you know, in a school where, where the a donor, a prospect looked at the list of things that, that were going to be constructed and said, "I don't like it, I don't like the items, they're, they're not academic oriented enough, they're more athletic, and I don't believe that athletics builds character," which kind of caught us off guard. And the superintendent was good to say, "Well, there are things that we didn't have on our campaign list, one of them being a performing arts center. How do you feel about that?" This woman happens, believed very strongly that that was important, and she paid for it. I mean, that was, that got added to the campaign list, and she wrote a check. So those, that's not a bad, that's not a bad approach at all, it's just a matter of how it gets structured right from the beginning. And I think, I mean, I think that having something that is very eco-friendly, having something that is very academic, and where you can show how it makes a difference, something that helps, I mean, early childhood education, for example, that have other needs, I mean, having, having a mixture like that can be very powerful.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Jim.
The next oral report is the facilities plan update, early learning center, Dr. Schuler.
As we transition, I think Patrick Brosnan from Leggett Architects is going to come up and walk the board through the presentation that was included in your packet. Just by way of reminder and summary, the board's facilities committee had previously created a list of potential scenarios associated with early learning center improvements. That was shared at our last board meeting, discussed, we added a few things to that, that mix of, of options, and, and so we took that back, and spent quite a bit of time with the facilities committee, vetting, vetting those out, both with some preliminary concept drawings as well as some, some cost estimates. And so Patrick's going to walk us through tonight what the facilities committee looked at, and the facilities committee's original, I guess, or their, their recommendation to the, to the board that wants to come to base to our discussion tonight. So Patrick?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. For those who don't know me, I'm Patrick Brosnan, with me is Joe Papa Nicholas from Nicholas Construction. We thought we'd kind of tag-team as we walk through various scenarios. We, although there's been several different test fits that are not on this, on this list, we're bringing nine to the table for a brief overview, and then a review of the costs related to it, and then we can circle back and do any questions that you might have on a individual, individual pieces. The overall summary, there's, out of the nine options that are available, they're detailed in the, in the list that you have. The first one is the, what we call the base scenario. This is addressing all the capital and life safety improvements that are necessary in the building. This is, in some ways, thinking about its, keeping the building up to the standards that are necessary for occupancy. So it's kind of, in a lot of ways, it's kind of, let's not do anything related to program, let's focus on the capital improvements and the life safety improvements. This scenario, we see it as a base, I think it's important to consider this for each of the other scenarios, because it's, and some of the different options, it, it's, these are dollars that may need to be spent if you were to say, "Let's not, let's not do anything at all. Over time, the capital improvements will need to get accomplished." And so it's important to think about that, about that number. Within that line item, there's a process of about $5.2 million, and that comes directly out of the capital improvement plan that's been reviewed in the past by the board. The facility committee did not feel that this scenario met all of the criteria that they were looking to accomplish, such as program and quality of the learning environment. Scenario A, which is, is basically renovating and expanding the early learning center, this has a diagram that goes along with it, and this has, it's basically looking at the existing building and adding on roughly four educational direct instruction spaces, so four classrooms for early learning, and bringing those up to the expected program requirements. So those four spaces are program-driven, plus the necessary therapy spaces, large motor room, those other components, but adapting and continuing to use the existing classrooms at their current location and size, even though they don't be the, all the program requirements. The concept here is to work within the existing building, improve the, the kind of fit and finish of the spaces, but not bring all the spaces up to the program needs. But any new spaces would have the upgrades to meet the program requirements. It does incorporate a secure play area and parking, separation of cars and buses is best that can be done, and it also reserves spaces for play, detention that would be required. So it's, in a lot of ways, it incorporates a lot of the needs, but continues to use spaces that are in the existing building, whether they are, meet the program size requirements or not. Joey, you want to comment on that, possibly?
Sure. With regards to a construction implementation, this is a multi-phase renovation. The way I foresee this taking place, we will focus on the new addition and new site work. It could be up to 10 months of construction, which we then follow with two phases of renovation, minimum. I think two is doable, the new addition. Fortunately, in this scenario, we want to have room to house all programming, and then move everyone over in one shot, and then go back and renovate all 27,000 square feet of existing. So we would construct the new, construct the new site, parking, and then split the existing area into two different phases, which I said earlier, could go up to another eight months. So we could be looking at an 18-month-plus schedule to implement this scenario. The total budget at this point, from a very high altitude looking down, would be $18.8 million.
So the next scenario, we refer to it as A1. And the reason why we refer to it as A1, it's basically the same concept, so capital improvements, life safety improvements, fit and finish to portions of the existing building. But in this scenario, all the direct instruction spaces are brought up to the equivalent level that's required by the, the program required by what's happening in the school today, the student needs. And they're all built simultaneously as part of the first phase of construction. So the existing building remains in use, and then there's an effort to go back and renovate portions of the existing building. Spaces that are needed for diagnostics, therapy, staff meeting spaces are pushed into the existing building where we can utilize smaller, smaller spaces. And again, trying to minimize the heavy renovation. So this again, kind of focuses on that program-driven model of direct instruction spaces to meet the, we're going to meet the programmatic needs for the early learners, as well as the therapy spaces, large motor, and as far as the site, this is very equivalent as far as the parking is provided, stormwater retention, outdoor learning spaces, and in separation of cars and buses.
Can I ask a question? Does A and A1 bring back the other, the programs that are housed in our other buildings?
Both, both A and A1 will consolidate the programs, yes.
If I may ask a question, could you guys provide the square footage in each of these proposals? Is that available?
We do have those, yes.
Sure. So in this scenario, A1, we had 32,000 square feet approximately new addition.
So you're talking about total?
And then 27,000 square feet of renovation, so approximately 59,000 square feet.
59,000 square feet.
A1?
That would be A1. And then in scenario A, it would be 3,000 square feet of new addition, with 27,000 square feet of renovation.
So again, 59,000?
So that would be 45,000.
45,000.
So in scenario A1, a little cleaner than scenario A, just in the fact that we are creating 32,000 square feet of new space that we can do with one transfer, one transition from existing to new, with staff and students, and then go back and renovate all at one time, the 27,000 square feet, new addition, new site, we're looking at up to 16 months of construction, with approximately six months of renovation for the remainder.
Jim, when you, when you add up those square footages on A1, it's not a, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, because A1 is a little bit different in that there would be additional square footage within the existing building that wouldn't necessarily be needed for the early childhood program. So it gives us other opportunities that would benefit elsewhere in the district, so in other words, we could possibly take components of what we're, where we're using, Woodland down in Hornville, or maybe move some of that space in there, which might allow us to get rid of that building. The facility department is in the trailer behind Monroe, taking up space there, so there's some other elements that would be left over, the existing square footage in A1 that we could utilize. So all, whatever, that 59,000 square foot, that's not all dedicated to the early childhood program. So it's a little caution with that number.
That's a good point. So in scenario B, we're referring to this...
Another question, we'll see you after that one. A1?
22.6 million.
Thank you.
So scenario B, we labeled it intergovernmental property plan. So this is looking at alternative sites, and particularly the Monroe site, considering, is there a possibility to expand the existing Monroe building in order to accommodate early learning and, and allow the existing site to have an alternative use? And there's a couple of different scenarios, I know what that might be. The areas identified in light green in this diagram represents roughly about 4.8 acres of property, and that's comparable to the Jefferson site without the building. So we went to the south end of the parking lot of the current Jefferson site and drew a line to East and West, that open field area is roughly about 4, 4.5, 4.8 acres, and that's pretty comparable to the area of light green. Now, this is again, off maps and diagrams, it's not necessarily off surveys, but it's a good, high-level look. This solution provides a separate entrance for early learning, parking, parent drop-off spaces, outdoor play areas, it does have an area identified for potential future addition if it's necessary. All the spaces meet the program needs, so it's program-driven for all areas of the building. It has a connecting link to the Monroe Middle School, and so it does provide opportunity for potential shared programs, shared staff, as well as opportunities for early learners to utilize space maybe within the middle school if it was needed for a special activity or a particular event. The, it does maintain the Hart District play areas on Manchester, and, as well as it incorporates dedicated play spaces for the early, early learners that are dedicated certainly for, for early learning. In this scenario, the, we have not included costs for any renovation or capital improvements to the existing Jefferson building, and the, the concept could be here that within that intergovernmental plan, there may be a swap of properties of the 4.8 acres, maybe for the same 4.8 acres on the Jefferson site, the Hart District potentially would be able to utilize that. There's also other scenarios that you can consider, other alternatives as well. But the, the concept is that open space, for open space, it relates to the Hart District, and then the opportunity for utilizing that open space for construction with minimal impact to the early learners or to the middle school students during construction. And Joe will explain the process and cost.
So scenario B, this is 47,500 square feet of one large addition, 16-month construction schedule. This is fairly clean, least amount of impact, it's cost-effective. I think contractors will look at a scenario like this, single phase, one construction duration. duration.
Any questions?
The cost is 19.1 million.
The next scenario we considered, we labeled scenario C, and we're looking at adding an early learning center onto an elementary school. So we looked at different elementary school sites and felt the best prospects for that would be the, looking at Sandberg or Whittier. And so, starting with Sandberg, we're, again, at a high level, kind of address what we see as the pros and cons and what the committee's comments were, and the kind of the opportunities that each site provides. Again, these are done with maps and, again, a high level of concept. Either we're showing detail, we're showing each parking space, but these are also sketches, really, we should be thinking about these concepts. The, looking at the Sandberg site where there is play areas to the north of the building, it has some possibilities for, for space or an additional building. The, without losing or destroying play space and parking areas, it requires us to kind of build it a little bit further away than we initially had hoped. So kind of a long connecting link between the new early learning center and the existing Sandberg building. It does have space, as you can see, that the actual area identified for potential future expansion. There are spaces for parking, we're able to show 65 parking spaces. We're not able to separate cars and buses as much as we'd like to, so there are some positives in that respect. The negatives probably be that the construction's happening on the open play area for, for the building, limiting opportunities for those outdoor instruction spaces, as well as physical education. It also limits potential future expansion of Sandberg as a building itself, and creates a little bit of congestion at that site since Woodland is kind of, would serve both buildings. Some of this can be addressed with scheduling, and, but it does give you kind of overall look as far as how that potentially would fit on the building. And this program would be the same program we just discussed at Monroe, as far as square footage. The difference is going to be the connecting link at each of the scenarios is a, is a little bit different in how we connect. The alternative to Sandberg, we looked at Whittier. That was a good suggestion as well. Whittier has some open play areas. They are used for physical education, they're also used for brother outdoor programming, as well as detention. So this is kind of a challenge with, the Whittier site is stormwater, is the boards of weather has been flooding issues with the, both these properties. And so the concept here is, would be coming up back with a plan, how to engineer that in order to minimize flooding and be able to accommodate the stormwater and meet all the guidelines and requirements. So we believe it could be done with potentially a combination of above-ground and below-ground stormwater detention. We're showing a short connecting link to the existing Whittier school. We're showing an enclosed, secure outdoor play area. Parking as best we could get on-site, we rarely get 35 spaces, we're trying to approach 65. So that would put an impact on adjacent parking areas, street parking, for instance. It has a long connecting link to get to the site from the, from Arbor Avenue. So that, again, probably is a, is a negative, but it does, is able to fit on the site. But it creates some congestion, we believe, overall. Again, some of that can be addressed with scheduling, with stagger starts for the buildings. When we stand back and look at this option, some of the concerns that were raised by the committee was the future expansion of Whittier would be impacted, the outdoor programming is, is impacted, and the access was the other concern to the, to the building overall.
Patrick, with respect to scenario C, is there a connecting link between Sandberg and-
Yes. Yeah, we didn't highlight it, we really didn't solve the, all the details related to it, but yes, there would be a connecting link to allow inclement weather for shared programs and staff to be able to move freely from one side to the other side.
Two other questions, one for you, maybe Joe, and then one for the committee. Is there, have you put a dollar amount to Sandberg?
Both scenarios Cs are comparable at the 19.1 million to scenario B, basically driven by reutilizing and proposing similar square footage, site components, parking lot, same duration, which affects my general conditions and whatnot, at this point.
And where it says, under the Whittier option, the committee does not recommend this scenario, does that apply to both scenario Cs, or just to the Whittier scenario?
My point of view is yes. I either-
Okay.
What's the answer to that? I'm confused. Can you repeat your question and then we'll hear the answer.
Yep. And this is directed to the committee. Their recommendation with respect to the Whittier scenario is that they do not recommend this scenario, and does that apply also, that recommendation to the Sandberg option? And the answer from Robin Brad is yes.
So neither of those are being recommended. Who's making the recommendation? The committee? The committee is?
So, and just to recap, scenario C, it's taking a play space from the existing elementary schools, which is critical, limiting any kind of flux of the long-term, and creating some pretty significant traffic, loads, and transportation issues within, not only the schools, but the neighborhoods that surround the schools. And on top of that would be the stormwater issues. And, and I'll add to it, as we heard last time, there's not a lot of extra space left over in either Whittier or Sandberg that can be utilized for the early childhood program that would, that would kind of lead us to a smaller situation.
Okay, we'll move on to scenario C1. So in a similar organization, we looked at both the Sandberg and Whittier sites, again. So the concept behind scenario C1 is looking at reducing the impact on any one site by separating the program to two sites, so one to the north, one to the south. The concept was that that would create less traffic and less impact at individual sites, but also potentially have a positive impact on transportation. This is the bus ride, potentially would be shorter if there's a site to the north and a site to the south. Some of the challenges would be the director having two sites that they're responsible for, the, as we started to study that option, there was obviously a duplication of space because each population requires an occupational therapy space, large motor space, lobby entrance and office space, conference space, so there is one concern. But when you look at the site scenarios, C1, again, we studied Sandberg first, we see the connecting link, comparable, concerns relates to parking and buses. It does free up space adjacent to the, to the building, would allow for a little bit of extra play space, but it still has a significant impact on stormwater and overall site circulation. In a similar way, looking at the Whittier site, the, we're able to recapture a play space, a portion of a play field. We still have similar impact on stormwater basin, parking, bus drives would still be comparable. So again, less footprint, but not, basically the difference is losing the square footage related to eight spaces. We still see a lot of core spaces that are required for those programs, and then obviously the connecting link could be able to develop opportunities for shared programs. And Joel will talk about the cost scenario.
So in this scenario, we have 36,000 square feet of new addition at each site being proposed. These would, they're essentially two separate projects. In lieu of having one site and one project issuance, we would have two sites which are standalone, which would require full-time supervision and project management. So we're essentially doubling what we call fixed general conditions and reversible general conditions, and now we have two projects and two sites in lieu of one. This would be over 16 months, they would go up to currently. And this is 31.2 million dollars.
And what was the square foot being added?
36,000 in each.
So 72,000.
72, yes.
That's because of a lot of duplication.
Right. So again, the committee did not recommend further study of this scenario. Cost was a significant component of that, the impact to the two sites, and limitations on those existing sites in the future, or, or concerns that were raised. The, the next scenario is referred to as scenario D, early learning at an existing district school. And so the concept here is identifying a existing elementary school that would be able to house, would have about the right square footage to be able to house the early learning program, and essentially close that elementary school, redistribute that elementary population to other elementary districts, or other elementary dependent areas that are nearby, remapping that portion of the district, and then converting that building into a early learning center. We did not develop a diagram for this, or get to the level of discussing which building potentially would be considered, but the committee did discuss the different impacts. What it would do is it would avoid the need for constructing a new building, but it was realized that it may trigger the need for smaller additions to those elementary schools that are impacted by moving the dislocated students to a new building. It may trigger two or three small additions. Additionally, the, it tightens up those sites as far as future capacity, and addressing fluctuations or changes in the population, as well as the modifications in, to those individual buildings, as well as a building would be identified for early learning would require stormwater improvements, landscaping improvements, and other things because of the new construction or heavy renovation that would need to take place at those individual sites. The committee really felt that this didn't warrant further discussion at this time, but it was something that was discussed, since we have included that here. So Joel's got a cost estimate for that one, but we don't have any detailed drawings for that. But any questions on that one? Go ahead and move to E. So scenario E is one that was considered previously, so some of you may recognize some of the documents that are included here. Scenario E is looking at the early learning center at the Hubble Middle School site. The concept here is to, first of all, look at any underutilized spaces within the Hubble Middle School. And that's been discussed previously, is maybe a range of four to six spaces that could be freed up, that would be able to be utilized for an alternate program, and then looking for space to be able to add on to the building. So there's different challenges related to this, but the, the concept is that there's four or six spaces that are available, could those be utilized to reduce the number of new spaces that are needed. If we utilize the number of four, in other words, reserving some spaces for future changes at Hubble, out of the six, I think in terms of two. Four spaces then would become available for the early learning, that would require still 12 additional spaces that would need to be added on to the existing building. Early learners, as we've talked about before, need to be on the, what's called the egress level, so they exit the building in the case of emergency without having to climb stairs. And that becomes a challenge at the, at the site, the current Hubble site, because of the changes in grade, but also the concept of saying, how do we get that kind of square footage in one contiguous addition with all on one level? And we'll talk about that in a second. The other challenges that come along with that is the spaces for administration, support spaces, impact on busing and parking, as well as outdoor learning spaces. So the busing component, we believe, could be solved through scheduling. The parking would be a little bit of a challenge based on the number of parking spaces that are provided today. The other component that we discussed was the planned unit development, or the special use permit that the city of Warren, Warrenville granted to the school district as far as possibility to be used, as well as stormwater parking requirements, landscaping requirements, setbacks, those types of things. So the, there would need to be a variance process put in place to expand that building in any one of these scenarios, or different scenarios that we can discuss. The diagrams that follow take you through the study that was done previously, an earlier test fit, looking at where are the potential places at the Hubble site that could be added on to. Those are identified in seven different places on the site, and we analyzed what those spaces are currently being used for now, and whether it was feasible to the recapture of those. So I'm not going to go through all those today, but there's play areas, there's parking areas, athletic spaces, there's outdoor educational spaces, and there's one area that we identified as Area 7, which we felt could accommodate new space. It doesn't fit the entire program that's needed, but we did identify that and show how that potentially could fit portions of the, the program. We review these again with the, with the committee. The committee didn't recommend pursuing this option, but they, they did appreciate the opportunity and the effort that's there, the challenges, as I said, related to the special use permit, the falling short of the required program of square footage, and then a challenge related to the site as related to outdoor play, the, and as I mentioned earlier, parking and bus configuration. One other thing that we talked about, which I think sometimes if you drive by that site, you see this beautiful naturalized detention basin, and it seems like there's a lot of space there, there's some reminder board, that space really sits on property, it's owned by BP, the stormwater easement was created to allow the school district to detain their water there, and then the remaining capacity of that stormwater detention is dedicated or needed to BP for potential future development of their property, which is to the south. So technically, there's, the district's not allowed to put any additional stormwater into that easement without certainly renegotiating or re-studying the components that went into development easement, the agreements between the parties, and then the special use permit itself. So any questions on E, since we have it up under the work?
I was just going to comment on this one. I mean, you kind of articulated the really complex site zoning, some special use permits, agreements with an outside corporation, very, very complicated process. You know, when we looked at this at the facility committee level a year or so ago, this was really not, this is deep, not being very ideal, not a very good solution, further complicated. Now, I'm guessing that whole process would add time to the schedule, which therefore add cost to the actual project, so site constraints, you know, I, I feel, again, like I did last time, that this is really not a good solution. It's my professional opinion, if I can be a professional first.
Last option we considered, again, this is a way of collecting all these items, so you can look at them side by side. The scenario F is the utilizing the Jefferson site, adding a building to, reconstruction to the south, and then the demolition and reconfiguring of the site. This is essentially the, similar to the previous referendum option, and it would have a lot of the same benefits. So we'd meet the program needs of the students, there'd be outdoor play areas, the parking would be accommodated on-site, separation of buses would be accommodated, outdoor play spaces, so that it met a lot of the required program aspects, as well as the opportunity for future expansion and the meeting requirements, this relates to zoning and setbacks. The, we talked about schedule and cost impact, obviously since time has passed, since this referendum was proposed. Joel will take us through the changes in the cost.
Thank you. I did assume, for the sake of providing an updated budget, that construction would commence somewhere late fall of 2019, so that was taken into consideration. It was a placeholder commencement date, but based on that start date, we're looking, I carry usually around 4% to 5% for- we're looking, I carry usually around four to five percent for per year escalation. So that four to five percent was taken into consideration as well. And then also commencement starting in fall in lieu of a spring start, we now get into winter construction. So again, at this point in time, I believe that additional cost should be added to accommodate winter construction if that ends up being the case. So those are both significant factors, which brings us to eighteen point four million in lieu of the sixteen point five million, which you previously saw in November of 2016, I believe it was. This is approximately forty-five thousand square feet of new building.
Just another clarifying point on this is the reason why fall 2019 would be part is because this is a new building, therefore it would require a referendum. And if we assume November referendum at the outset, that's what pushed the schedule back. We can't do this without referendum.
Yeah, I'm, you know, this is great presentation. I just think, you know, somewhat we're approaching this, you know, kind of this design versus looking at what we can afford and going the other direction. And, you know, I think that, you know, we're kind of coming up with a plan here that's making forty-seven thousand, forty-five thousand square feet. We currently have twenty-seven thousand square feet. So whatever we do, whether, you know, it is solid roughly four hundred dollars a square foot. So I guess, you know, in the big picture, I'm looking at, we've got two failed referendums that have included the Jefferson component. Whether that was the reason the last one failed or not, but it was in there, okay? I truly believe that we were funding that Jefferson out of existing money. So absence of a referendum, which would cause the delay of time, as you mentioned. You know, I see that we have approximately ten million dollars of fund balance. We have Sherman Durges five million dollars of renovations in our target for the improvements at Jefferson that we need to be doing over the next three years. And I think, you know, to go to a referendum on this, I think would be very challenging and delaying. So, you know, in my mind, I'm saying, why don't we design a building that's affordable? That affordable, let's say is fifteen million dollars, sixteen million dollars for this. You know, and maybe our external fundraising could be helpful during that process as well. But, you know, we have a choice right now of having a twenty-seven thousand square foot building that'll never get fixed, okay? Or we're going to spend five million dollars renovating whatever. Or we may be able to afford a forty thousand square foot building at four hundred dollars a square foot at sixteen million dollars. And I just, you know, I think myself, I would rather see that. And if that means we can't house everything in one place, we've still created a better facility for the, of these special needs students, basically. So I think that we have to look closely before we look at this. I know what it's going to cost us, twenty, eighteen, twenty million dollars to do this. I don't know how we're going to do that, okay? So, you know, I'd rather say, what can we get for what I think is maybe fifteen, sixteen million dollars affordable? And then tying that into, you know, where else do we put, you know, the space? I mean, you know, we're doing this in twenty-seven thousand square feet now. So we can add thirteen thousand right out of it. I mean, I don't care, you know, I mean, I recognize it, but I don't know that we, if we keep designing twenty million dollar spaces there, I don't know how we're going to afford it, okay? And if we want to go to a referendum on it, I think that's a, I personally think that's going to be very challenging to pass.
I agree with that last part, but it's not twenty-seven thousand square feet. That's the square footage that serves the portion of the early childhood program that sits at Jefferson. There's other elements of the program in three other schools that will be consolidated into it. So I think the recommendation of the committee is to narrow in on A and A1 as further analysis and scenario B as further analysis. And then dig into in a little bit more detail, is there places where we can, you know, keep programs at certain locations? Or maybe the head start program stays down at Johnson Elementary School, might allow us to build something smaller. But, you know, our objective as a committee was to try to show you the research, narrow it down a little bit, and then figure out what the next steps are. Because eventually it's going to get turned over to the finance committee and, you know, how we pay for this.
Okay, as a finance committee member, my opinion will be we can't afford more than fifteen, sixteen million dollars. And that means we can't put it all on the run rough, so be it. When I say twenty-seven thousand square feet, we're adding thirteen under that scenario. And if we can't bring everybody in, we already can't be there. But, you know, how do we get past the fact that we have an undesirable, is the word I guess, so used facility that exists with twenty-seven thousand square feet? I just don't know how we solve that and not find the money some other way or identify the money that we can identify to do it. But I think, again, you know, like you said, the referendum concept, you know, tell me the way. You know, maybe our fundraising program will, you know, raise five million, we'll get that in sixteen months. You know, we could change something, but I can't count on that, you know? But I think we have to address this because every time we've looked at this, this cost goes up at about two million a click, you know, every year. Four years ago was, I don't know, sixteen million, and then last year was eighteen million, and now we're getting twenty million pretty soon, so, you know.
I think that part of tonight's discussion is to narrow down, because that's why we included all the options that were very feasible at one time or another. So you're really looking at nine different scenarios. The committee identified three of those for further study. And by narrowing down the options, it makes it easier then to say, okay, within scenario A, what can we do for this price? For A1, what can we do for this price? Scenario B, what are the possibilities? And then continue those to further study that. But it reduces the, starts to move the other options off the table then. And so that's really the purpose of tonight's presentation.
I feel very good about what you're saying there, and I think that I could say to you now, we need to design a sixteen million dollar property and then determine what we can fill or we can't fill. That would be something I'd need to see before I vote yes on any of these scenarios because we just, I don't see what we're going to afford. And that's what we're considering.
Well, is it a fair question to ask board members? Does any board member want this committee that's been working so hard to look at any other scenarios other than the ones they're recommending to look at? Go ahead, Rob.
So this is like any large project I've ever been involved with, anywhere, any focus, any scope. You want to do something cheaper, you have to reduce the requirements of the project. You just can't do it cheaper. And so we're working under the requirements that were set forth by the previous board and other work the administration has done. And so my statement, if we want to do it cheaper, we need to reduce the requirements of the program and make a lot of assumptions about that program that we're just not going to address. That's the only way to do it, in my opinion, the only way to do it cheaper. Cheaper, you know, any other design components, location, materials, whatever, that's not going to reduce it to a palatable level. I think we need to reduce the requirements if that's the desire.
I have a question relative to scenario F. Why are we dismissing this? Because the implication on F is that that is the only scenario that would require a referendum. So you're suggesting that the other ones will not require a referendum, and that's why we don't have F as a possible scenario? Or are you letting the calendar drive that decision? Because I don't think the calendar should drive our decision. And so I guess the question becomes, the implication here, whether I'm missing something, is that F is being dismissed for two things. A calendar issue, and you don't want to go referendum. So my question is, as a finance committee member, how are we going to finance any of the others? Is it going to be via referendum, or what's it going to be? Because we're going to have to bring some recommendations to the table. So if you can answer the question regarding scenario F, that would be helpful for me.
It's easy. Take money out of the picture for now. A new building, new students requires a referendum. Did the same thing as in addition to an existing school, will not require a referendum. That's the law. Taking funding out of the equation, which is, we still have to deal with that.
I understand, but my point is, if, to Jim's point, if that new building, scenario F, was maybe skinny down or other things could be done on that property, you know, maybe the referendum would pass. So I'm with you, I get the law. So basically, any new building to achieve what we're trying to achieve will be under the scope of referendum. And so we've got to figure out other ways to get that money. And we're basically, you know, to me, that's just a little, you know. I guess the good news is we've kind of recognized the referendum's not going to pass. The question then becomes, to Jim's point, what is the threshold of pain and how do we get there? And it may not be twenty-two million dollars or twenty million dollars.
Jim, one thing I would add into that discussion though. So, you know, if you look at, put two scenarios side by side, the scenario at Monroe versus new building, same site at Jefferson. Whatever you build, you could build the same exact thing on either of those sites, right? So however you chose to scale it, to Rob's point, whether you build what's proposed here or we reexamine the program and say it's too big, let's bring it down, you know, let's scale down the size of the program, you could do the exact same thing on both of those sites because in essence it's a new building, whether you're building it on Jefferson or you're building it at Monroe. As I've continued to look at those options, and especially the Monroe option, I actually think that may be a better option than rebuilding on the same site where Jefferson is. And the reason why I think that that's the case is that it gives the board ultimately some flexibility down the road on what you do with the existing Jefferson site. So you have an asset, right, for the same cost that you're going to build next to Monroe or build at Jefferson. The one difference is if you build at Jefferson, you're tearing down that existing asset. It's got some liability issues in it, you know, recognized. You build at Monroe, I think you maintain that asset, which I think could serve, whether it's a district interest down the road or perhaps that parcel where the building itself sits becomes a disposable asset that could bring value in the future. I just actually think at the end result for doing the same thing, I believe, I think you'd come out further ahead building on Monroe and having flexibility as to what you do with that existing asset rather than simply tear it down.
And I think that's a fair statement, but I guess just for the record, F is being dismissed because it requires referendum, so we reconciled in our mind that that is not an option.
The referendum piece? Again, I will tell you only from the facility committee discussion. And again, if you were to ask me my opinion and my opinion only, I would not go back out to referendum for Jefferson again. I think whatever you do to build an early learning center, in whatever way we do, we put together some other combination of financial variables that the math has pointed out, you know, a number of them with existing fund balance that I highlighted at the beginning of the meeting that there's another old asset out there from, you know, the state of Illinois and that fourth quarter categorical payment that will, if it comes in, come into fund balance and, you know, increase that element. So I think you may have some options on how you go about paying for it, that you address early learning center without it being with future debt.
You made one statement there that I am confused by. You mentioned if we do Monroe, we would maintain the existing site. I thought that the Monroe addition, whatever you want to call it, would require us to have property that's currently owned by the Park District. And if so, I thought that was a land swap issue.
Land, not building, land.
Okay, so you're saying by that, the land to the south of the existing Jefferson building would be traded for the land at Monroe. The building itself would be maintained by the district.
You look at the slide, the Jefferson site is in the middle here. This portion of, referred to earlier as a open green space, that area is about four and a half acres, and then it's comparable to this light green area at the Monroe site.
And that way, Jim, if we kept that facility, we'd maybe move the wood lawn elements there? Or maybe there's a buyer for that facility that wants to look something?
I just, I think that's important that we recognize. I thought the Park District was, you know, trading in its entirety. And we've had some glimmering conversation with the Park District saying that they're interested in furthering this conversation.
I've had some conversation at the staff level.
I'll understand that. If I look at scenario B at Monroe, I'm hundred percent confident that the learning environment we create for that program is equivalent to what we could do in a new building under scenario L. It's not going to be compromised, just because it's in addition to an existing school.
How do we go from what I'll call my question about the fifteen, sixteen million dollar building to the twenty million dollar building? I think that's something that has to be addressed and, you know, to Rob's point, you know, what are we losing by doing that and so on? So I think that's something that I really have to get over hurdles because I don't know how we can afford twenty million dollars.
Yes, my recommendation is that I think that is a conversation that now needs to happen on two levels. Again, strictly from a program study, I do want to reiterate that, you know, the same was true when we designed the building that was a part of this last referendum plan. Board may remember that the initial price tag or cost projection on that building was significantly, my term, significantly higher than what it was in the referendum. Because as we moved into more detailed design phases, we were able to make some conscious decisions in terms of the scope of the design to bring that cost down. We've not done that yet with any of these designs. What I will tell you, and part of it in conversation with Joe and certainly with staff here, the last thing that I would want to do is give you an initial cost estimate that's ten percent lower than what the final bill comes out to. I would rather give you an initial cost estimate that candidly will only come south, will not go north as we dive further into the design elements. So I guess on two levels. Facility committee, I think with either affirmation of their recommendations that are a part of these agreements, they've got to dive back into some of these concepts and now kind of get into some of the more detailed elements of design that I think will shift the cost. I think at the same time, assuming the board would support this direction, I think the finance committee needs to have an initial discussion of those other potential funding elements and give its recommendations to the board on, I'd like to be here in terms of a cost. And then we see how those two concepts can marry at some point and do that. So I think they're both valid elements. I, you know, I certainly would hate to see the board, simply because you, I mean, I get finances. We cannot spend more money than we have on a building. Yet at the same time, I would hate based on just kind of an artificial, I don't want to call it an artificial, but based on just the preliminary, we think fifteen million is, it's the cap. I would hate to see you not design the building that ultimately serves the purpose. I think the two got to kind of go hand in hand. Finance committee needs to dive into this and, you know, bring that side by side with refinement from the facilities committee. And at some point in time, ideally with one of these concepts, we get to a place that appears to work.
Okay, I guess I understand what you're saying, and I think that we need to focus on this. You know, I guess the next step, again, we're dealing with the term update on the early learning center. I'd like to see a plan in the next month or whatever that we really start focusing down. I mean, I don't think we're at an action state here to say, let's go with the Monroe plan. I personally feel that's the best one at this point, but it's got to be affordable. And I, you know, I don't want to keep looking every month, looking at varying alternatives. And maybe somebody else likes one of the other plans better, and that's fine. But I clearly would suggest, from my point of view, that the Monroe one would be the one we address most significantly.
Can we eliminate, are we eliminating a few of them?
Well, that's not, is there any board member that wants the facilities committee to look at anything but? A, A1, and B, and the Monroe option? So that's A, A1, and B. Does anybody on the facility committee want, anybody on this board want the facility committee to look at any other options?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding D. So in my mind, I've kind of been being three hundred and fifty kids in a school. I'm looking at matriculation patterns, most of them are three, elementarys to a middle, without having to change middle school stuff except for the north side where Washington is split. So if we were to do something like a D, in my mind, then I'm saying we would be splitting a minimum of six classrooms, classrooms in two other elementary buildings, and we don't have an elementary building that can house six more classrooms. Am I right in saying that? So then that changes my mind on that one, and I don't think that's an option then because then we'd be looking at having to add on or mobile classrooms or things like that. I just wanted to make sure that that's clear to everybody that.
Let me add to that, that in that number of students, that number of classrooms, often when you attach that to an existing elementary school, you're going to add more than just classrooms? Parking, dining space, attendance space for special educations, speech therapists, speech, social work, all that kind of stuff, maybe it's even added into that too. So it's not just moving kids because you need to make the existing elements go as bigger as well.
So it's pretty, I just want to point out, it's a pretty significant.
It's a lot more complicated than just moving three hundred and something odd of kids.
I think there's a potentially a third stream of work, but I just want to ask a question about.
question about, when the requirements were defined, or what would be in our scope of our early learning services, were they prioritized? Is that list prioritized? What's the first stuff to come out when we're going to de-scope it and to bring the cost down? Because we may make some headway on bringing cost down with budgets or creative, you know, design, but it's not coming down to a palatable level, just based on a conversation at this table. Do we have a prioritized list of those requirements?
We have a list of those requirements that is not prioritized, partially because that's, I mean, I guess the requirements that we advanced, in terms of the space we need for early learning center, those were not considered to be choice elements, without compromising the program that we're delivering. But again, I guess that, Rob, your question, certainly that program list was initially developed on which scenarios the last go-around were built. We would absolutely need to revisit that if we were making decisions around how do you potentially pull back scope.
I think as representative of the community, the community's told us twice already that the plan we had was unacceptable. So whatever the scenario was that that was, you know, we've already heard no to that twice. So I think we, even if we, we have to change our topic, or our plan, or our priorities, whatever the term will be, you know, to meet what we believe we can afford, and I think, but, you know, that's, I don't, I don't see any other way to approach it personally.
And I guess at one point in time, once, there's going to be a need, and I'm certain there's millions of dollars associated with this as well, relative to housing or furnishing these buildings. You know, we're talking about the hard dollars, the construction, whatever it may be, but if you're going to be moving, if you're going to be in the scenario of building new at Monroe, or attaching to Monroe, you know, education's still going on in Jefferson, and we're going to obviously complete that building with accessories and furnitures and all the other needed things for these special needs. There's got to be hundreds, thousands of dollars associated with that, that we need to be identifying how we're going to take that out as well. So, and it's a little ahead of the, we got the cart before the horse here, but it's just an item, I think it's going to be another big number that we've got to work on.
If I could respond to that, the assessments that we prepared anticipate furnishings for the facility, as well as, with all owner costs, there's utility connections, there's all those components. So based on previous projects that we've done with the district and other districts, we've identified as many of those items as we could, and we have a lot at a dollar amount for each one of those, so there's a budget for those owner costs, furnishings, those individual accessories that would be needed, and those would obviously plus with the size of the building as well.
Paul Park, what would that be on our 47,500 square foot building?
Just on $900,000, 925 something like that.
Joe Patrick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So can I summarize, just because I absolutely want to walk away knowing that my expectation matches the expectation of the seven of you, so I believe, based on this conversation, Facility Committee will focus its work on A, A1, and B, and will dive deeper into some of the design around that. I believe what I understand from this is that we're going to convene the Finance Committee to begin the discussion around what do, what are our available sources of revenue on which we can pay for this, and is there a target amount in the eyes of the Finance Committee that we'll bring back together? And then sliding back to the Facilities Committee for a minute, what I heard was that the Facilities Committee, as we're investigating further into those three scenarios, will relook at the program piece to make absolutely certain that we've got the right program elements, and if there are different decisions we can make around that to build into these design elements, those are the three pieces. And again, what I heard, which certainly would match our interests, is that I want to make good decisions, but I want to make sure we continue to move forward, right, in our, in our solutions here. So if that means we can bring back further options at the next meeting, we certainly will.
You mentioned A, A1, and B. Could you summarize what those are real quick?
A and A1 are just the two different variations of expansion remodel of the existing site, B is the Monroe option.
The next item on the agenda is the ELO update, Dr. Schuler.
Faith, I'll take a break and let you introduce, Tim, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. We're doing a good, yeah, if you could give a quick, that would be great. We have Eric, also known as Kip Pigman, here to give us a presentation on our ELO consortium and an update with that. Kip is the coordinator, facilitator between the three districts of our ELO consortium, and I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Faith. Good evening, and thank you to the board and Dr. Schuler for the opportunity tonight to share a few updates about our program. I'm excited to be here. Tonight's purpose is really just three main areas. One, to provide a brief background of our consortium's history, including revisiting the why or the rationale of online learning. Two, to provide the board with an update on the program, but specific to the students and teachers of Wheaton North and Wheaton South. And finally, along the way, as I kind of share out some of this information, I'll include some of the challenges that we've experienced and some of the celebrations. Towards the end of the presentation, I'm going to pass the baton back to Mrs. Dolquist, and she's going to provide an update over the digital learning continuum here at District 200, and certainly we welcome any questions that you have. So back in 2014, your district partnered with Indian Prairie 204 and Naperville 203 to begin providing students and teachers the opportunity to learn online, but teach online. And the, these images on the screen represent the seven high schools that are part of the consortium, and I felt that the images kind of speak to the uniqueness of our consortium in terms of affording both our students and teachers the opportunity to learn and collaborate with one another across district lines and boundaries, and expanding that experience to so many different walks of life by including the seven high schools. And so I thought the images were powerful to include. When many districts choose to begin online learning, they do so in one of two ways. They either choose to outsource the program to a for-profit company, where the school district loses control over the quality of the curriculum and control of the teacher, to be frank. Or two, they purchase content from a provider, where that student's learning experience is kind of more solely directed by him or herself. And what speaks to kind of one of the guiding principles and one of the primary reasons the consortium was formed is, we all saw the value that online learning can bring students and teachers, but only if we could make sure that the experience that the students have online meets, if not exceeds, what all of our stakeholders expect that occurs on campus. And so truly, the heart of the consortium is our teachers, where they're the ones delivering the instruction, and they're the same ones who also create the instruction. Finally, we recognize that this experience for those students that choose is surely going to ready them for college and careers. For example, last year's 2017 graduates from Wheaton North and Wheaton South, the top three schools that they attended so currently, in order are College of DuPage, University of Illinois, and University of Iowa. And in case you didn't know, College of DuPage has one of the largest online enrollments of any public institution in the state of Illinois. They offer over 250 different online courses, including 30 different degrees that students can take online. University of Illinois offers over 800 different online courses, and University of Iowa offers 500. And so the students that you choose to take an online course kind of have that indirect benefit that we're excited about of preparing them for the college and careers. When we began in 2014, we initially offered eight virtual courses during the academic year. We've since expanded that menu by six additional courses, and so currently, all of our students have the option to enroll in one of 14 courses during the academic year. That includes six virtual courses during the summer. Something for us to celebrate is that our online courses are NCA Core Course approved for athletes seeking Division I or II status, and the NCA does not hand that out often. And per my conversations with them, one of the primary reasons that we were able to receive that status is because of the rich interactions that our courses have, whether it's student with content, content with students, student with one another, student with teacher, and to be frank, particularly because of the interactions that our teachers have with students. So not just the ones that are struggling, but with all of the students. Since we launched, we've trained over just about 20 teachers from your district to become first-time online teachers. It's a requirement that we have of anyone that's interested in teaching online. As you can see from the table, 11 of those 20 were trained last year, and we're really pleased with that, because we're kind of at a point where we feel we have a healthy and positive amount of momentum with the teachers and generating more support towards the program. What kind of excites me the most is speaking to the teachers after they complete the training and/or after they teach their first online course, and hearing them talk about how that experience has not only helped them become a better online teacher, but it's also helped them become a better on-campus instructor, whether it's learning how to bring in new technologies on campus, or learning how to communicate with students in different ways, including extending those conversations outside the school day. And so that's been a big positive for us. One additional note on the training is, last year, with the support of our ELO board, we were able to build our own training, and that was important for us for two fronts. One, we used to outsource that training to a different organization where there was a cost to that, and by owning the training and creating it ourselves, we've reduced that cost from the consortium members. And secondly, by owning it now, we can customize and control the quality of it and make sure that we can kind of tailor it to each district's needs of the teachers. So this particular slide shows the overall enrollments between Wheaton North and Wheaton South since we launched in 2014. Roughly, your district has had just under about 130 students participate in online course since we started. Although we'd like to see that number a little bit higher, when we look at the current enrollments as we enter this year, being 55 students, representing the highest amount we've ever had, we were pleased to see that. And it's kind of some of the challenges we've had in regards to those enrollments are still educating parents and students about the affordances and limitations of online learning, and how it can help some students, including complement their on-campus instruction, continuing to empower more teachers and helping them to support the program, and working with buildings to continue to help them take more site-based control of the program as well.
May I ask you a question on this?
Certainly.
So do we have any statistics that would suggest that of those 55, were 30 of them from the previous year, and we just added 20 new ones?
That's a great question and a common one I receive. To be frank, we don't really track that, because since we only offer 14 courses right now, we don't really have a sequence of learning that would be natural for students to progress through, such as Spanish I, Spanish II, Spanish III, Spanish IV. And so a lot of our students don't have that opportunity to, I shouldn't say a lot, some of our students don't have that opportunity to progress through that sequence, just because that natural sequence isn't there, such as, say, Algebra I, Geometry, and then Algebra II, and that's something that we're working towards and continuing to build those strategic pathways.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And I guess it's for in-house, do we have a limit as to how many online courses students can take?
We don't encourage students to take more than one at one time, but right now, there's not a limitation. Counselors will look at, you know, the needs of why we'd be doing that, so it's kind of on an individual basis. There are some students that have medical reasons or other things, that it's really advantageous to take more online courses.
In the final item I'd like to point out on this particular slide, is kind of speaking back to the benefit of a consortium and partnering with other districts. What this slide doesn't show are four particular students from District 200 that enrolled in African-American literature this year. That course naturally would not run with just four students by themselves, but when you combine five other high schools across the consortium that also have two or three students per building, that affords us the opportunity to increase the access and opportunity for more students. So this particular slide is similar to the last one, but speaks towards summer school. When we first started summer school, at least I'll speak on my behalf, we weren't really sure how popular it was going to be, and the success of our summer school has really been a pleasant surprise. Since inception, we've served about 200 online enrollments from Wheaton North and Wheaton South over the summer, including half of those, or a little over 100 last summer. And so that's been something to celebrate. The top three reasons why students from Wheaton North and Wheaton South have indicated enrolling over summer school, 98% of them have chosen to take an online course to free up space for other courses that they're interested in during the school year. 45% of them have chosen this online course over the summer because they have other obligations and limitations that prevent them from taking a course on campus. And lastly, 30% have indicated it's because of their desire to have more control over where, when, and the pace of their learning. If you look at the slide, though, you also notice a second set of bars in light gray or light purplish, and that represents the number of sections that your teachers have taught over the summer. And this past summer, we had 19 different sections that were staffed by Wheaton North and Wheaton South teachers, and that's been a huge benefit for us, is due to the high demands of students enrolling in summer school courses across the entire consortium, it's afforded more teaching opportunities for staff over the summer. We've been real pleased with how the students have performed in the online environment. Since inception, students from Wheaton North and Wheaton South have had an average grade of 85% and a median grade of 90%. Success rate is a common indicator that online learning programs use to measure, and simply that just means the total amount of grades that students earn above and beyond a 70%. And your student's success rate has been a 90%. This is just an extension of the previous slide, showing the distribution of all of your learners' grades since inception. Roughly half of the students have earned an A, and almost 80% have earned an A or a B. And again, I think this speaks back to the commitment of the consortium to use our own teachers, develop our own curriculum, we work closely with the counselors, and we're continuing looking to evolve and be fluid in terms of the effectiveness of the supports we offer. For example, regardless of the course or teacher a student has, the visual interface of that course or instructional design is consistent, and that's important, because we want our students spending more time on learning and less time figuring out how to manage and navigate the learning management system.
Can I ask a quick question? The distribution, does that include completes, or kids just stop taking the course?
It includes failures or withdrawal failures. It does not include students that have withdrawn from the course within the school's policy calendar.
Okay, thank you.
The next slide shows the distribution of your district's investment into the consortium since inception. In 2014 and 2015, our first year, each of the three districts contributed an equal amount of money to help the consortium get off the ground and running, and that was $90,000. And if you look at each successive year, our costs have substantially reduced, including about $15,000 investment from District 200 this current year. And that cost reduction has been attributed to a few reasons. One, our commitment towards continuing to develop our own content, being less reliant on content that we purchase from a vendor, such as a digital textbook. Two, the fact that we've now built our own professional development training and no longer have to outsource that to ready our teachers. And three, and probably most significantly, due to the success of our summer program, we've been able to absorb some of the costs during the academic year, and that's even with having probably one of the lowest tuition fees in the state of Illinois for summer school at $185 per semester credit.
I can't recall, in 2014, 2015, how many schools were in the consortium, and how many are there now?
Sure, so that's remained the same since we initially started the program. Three districts, seven high schools.
Except for summer.
Sure, thanks for pointing that out, Dr. Schuler. Something else that we began to explore this past summer and had some pretty positive results with was opening up the consortium's seats over the summer to another high school, and that particular high school was Lake Zurich this summer. We kind of started small, with about 25 or so of their students as more of a pilot, to see how that would work, and we're looking to continue to possibly grow that as other sources of income to reduce the costs for the members during the academic school year. Kind of in closing, before I hand it over to Ms. Dolquist, we're always looking to continue to improve, and some things that we're looking to do in terms of growth, our students have shown a strong interest for summer school. It's been one of the most successful pieces of the program, and we're looking to add a seventh course for the summer of 2018, and we plan to begin kind of reaching out to different stakeholders to make sure that that seventh course we identify is the best. Our second staff have also shown a strong interest in the professional development piece, and so we plan to continue to offer additional options for staff, regardless of whether or not they plan to teach online, including topics that might just help them blend more of their instruction on campus. We plan to continue to increase and be intentional and proactive with... But we plan to continue to increase and be intentional and proactive with our communications with our parents and our students and continuing to look to empower our staff and help to generate more support for them and help them to see the value it has, not just for students, but also for them as well. And lastly, we'll continue to maintain a focus on being good stewards of our financial money.
All right, if you'll sign it to the next slide.
Sure.
Can I make a comment since we just finished on money? I just did the math. In terms of the total investment we made divided by the number of students, it's $518 per student versus $12,000 some odd dollars. Pretty good investment.
Maybe you don't need no buildings.
But it's part of that and picked up by parents of that cost on top of it.
Chris, what did you say?
Part of that, I mean, I had a child who was in ELO and I paid a fee.
For summer.
For summer. Yeah, so that has to get factored into that as well, right? To help us.
Can I real quick before we leave this? How many, we indicated some number, 55 I think, were the number of students participating in the program that was Wheaton North and South. And what, how does that compare to other member districts as far as percentages of students partaking? And then, you know, can you give me a brief overview of what the, how that online program works? What's the interaction with a teacher? What's the structure? Is it lecture that's presented, etc.?
Sure. I'll take the first question first because it was the most recent in my head. The experience that students have during the academic year is different than the experience they have during the summer, only because the summer learning experience is much more condensed. During the school year, students progress through the course as a cohort with other students just like they would on campus. It's a semester-based course. Students cannot finish that class early because we want to provide those students the opportunity to collaborate with one another on discussion boards, group projects, so forth and so on. The students have full autonomy to access that course when and where they prefer. Most of our students that access the course have three options. One, they get first period off, they come to school late. Two, they get the last period off and they leave school early. Or three, their counselor schedules them into a study hall. That study hall replaces kind of their seventh online course. However, based on our data that we collect from our students, most of them don't use the time in study hall to work online. They use that time to finish their on-campus homework because they have a little bit more flexibility to structure their time for the online environment. In terms of the interactions, that kind of goes back to one of the reasons why we were able to receive that core course approval from the NCA. It's kind of what separates us from a lot of the other core course providers, is that our teachers are proactive and intentional with their communications with students regardless of how well they're performing. And they put in a, for example, last year, we provided the students, the teachers will reach out to them with a list of tasks or goals. And the theme of the goals were how we can make the online learning environment feel less isolated for the learner. And so all of the goals were involved in communication, things like group projects, for example. We had one teacher who did kind of a pen pal exchange with his online learners and his on-campus learners. We have teachers that might bring in guest speakers, things of that nature. Does that answer your first question?
Pretty much.
Okay. In terms of the second question, the district that has shown the most amount of enrollment towards the program has been Indian Prairie 204. Speaking maybe just to one reason why is before the consortium launched, their particular district had online learning for years, I don't want to quote a number, I'm not positive on what it is, but at least two, three, or four years prior to when the consortium was formed. And so that online learning was piece, was kind of built into their culture before we even kind of formed this consortium. District 204, we have about 400 students enrolled this particular year. They have about 250 or so. District 203 has about 150 or so of those and then just under 60 for District 200.
And actually, the number of the distribution this year is pretty darn consistent with just the proportion of like student population. So Indian Prairie is bigger, but they've got its three high schools, much larger high schools. That's pretty consistent with their percentage of student population. And that's kind of how we have developed the base fee model is we guarantee for the fees we're paying, we're going to put at least that many kids in the consortium.
I was going back to the slide, the C O D staff training. What did we train, what are they trained to do? To deliver a course? I'm not familiar enough with the program.
Sure. When the majority of our teachers teach online, they're teaching it for the first time.
You said your teachers. Is it your teachers or are they our C O D? Are they people on this list?
Yes, yes. So all of our teachers that teach an online course come from one of the seven high schools within the districts. And so the purpose of that training is to ready them for that first experience they have teaching online. But what we found is that after they experienced that training, a lot of what they learn is, can be applied to blending their instruction on campus. For example, the topics that they cover in there are everything from the essentials of teaching online to how to manage their time, how to better provide feedback and communication using digital tools, things of that nature.
Thank you.
I can say as a parent of a child who's taken an ELO class as well as a C O D online class, as well as another one taking a BYU class, they, my one who took the ELO class had so much more interaction with the teacher. The one who took the C O D and the BYU class had no interaction with the teacher. So I think that's positive.
Faith?
Sure. And that kind of plays into our digital learning continuum. If you recall, we're trying to have classes that fit in all of that spectrum where you're completely, and I got to come up with a better term, but we're calling it unplugged learning, okay? Because it doesn't have a whole lot of technology because that's really great. And then all the way over to fully online learning, what we've talked about with ELO. Now, our version of ELO is not an online course like you may be familiar with, that you listen to the lecture, you answer the questions, and there's no interaction. Our version of that online piece is still a lot of individualized retention and instruction and questions from the teacher. But what we have seen is a lot of our teachers that are participating in that training that ELO has provided, they're also playing that into their regular classrooms when they do some blended learning where there's more of that piece of online of like how you pose those questions, how you have students interact on online discussion, what kind of discussion tools or resources are out there that'll really spark the type of learning that we have. And then the area kind of in between that where we call a classroom-supported online learning, several of the high schools around us have a kind of a blend, if you will, where the class meets two days a week, but the other three days of the week, you're managing your own time and doing the online piece. So it's a little bit like online learning, except you also have some face-to-face support. And Naperville 203 and also Indian Prairie 204 are doing that with some of their social studies classes. And we've talked to the high schools here and their interest in learning how that is going and also providing that option here possibly after we learn more about what that looks like. Our staff would not have been ready to do that if so many people hadn't experienced the teaching online and participated in the P D. Also wanted to just give a few kudos to Kip. I really appreciate all the details and support. Does anybody have more questions for either of us?
Have any of the member districts considered making a requirement for graduating students to take the class online?
Sure. Sure, that's a great question. I don't want to speak on behalf of the other districts, but I know everyone continues to have informal discussions on that topic. I'll share my personal experiences with that when I do attend open houses and curriculum nights at Wheaton North or Wheaton South or our partner schools. That is a common theme that comes from the parents is we would love to take this online course, but when they find out that it counts towards their seventh, they're no longer interested.
Their seventh class for during?
During the school year, correct. So I believe each district has, continues to have informal conversations about those topics, including what it would look like if you required it for graduation. But certainly there's a lot of dominos in.
So if we were to pursue those changes, those would be, have to be changes made at the individual board level, not at the ELO level?
Yes.
Can we put that in a parking lot?
One quick question, Faith, but this is, this one to you. How can we, I want to use the market this better. I just, I feel like the world has gone to more of an online format. I went into my husband's office, there wasn't a piece of paper on his desk. And I asked him about that and he said, because I don't use paper anymore. He's like, everything online. So if the private sector is moving so much online, how can we market this to get even more of the blended opportunities or something that we're getting our kids more of an experience to get into this?
That's something that we've struggled with since we put ELO in place, having the communication and getting it to the right people. A lot of the work that Kip has done is going to each of the schools, being at curriculum nights, being at orientation, being able to talk about those things. But the biggest impact as we talk about the different districts that have raised the student increase and had more students participate, it's really getting staff in and experienced it and have, oh, there could be some really great impact of that. As you all know, a lot of the popularity of a course is driven by popularity of the teacher. And you need to get some staff that are really bought in, feel like it's a great idea, talk to the counselors, and then word starts to spread. And by District 200 having that many more staff trained and then lots more of our staff taught summer school this year than some of the other school districts, you're beginning to see the momentum of that understanding of what this type of online class could be and the interest. I wish I had a really great idea of how we can have all parents know about how the world is changing and the stats like Kip provides about how many colleges you need to take online courses. And we definitely have that information and Kip gives a great presentation, but it's getting out in front of everybody. He did come and speak to all of our P T A board, you know, and trying to get the word out there of what that looks like. We definitely keep talking with staff, we're meeting with the department chairs. Dan, the barn thrower, is really involved in this. So we just have to make really continued efforts to have personal face-to-face conversations with people about ELO.
Like Chris, my daughter took ELO, consumer economics, economics over the summer and thought it was great. I probably thought it was better than she did, but she's got it done. It was a great experience. And I want to compliment Kip and I'd love the end of the summer summaries where you can say, you know, from these different countries where people took the class or these different states, I think they took it on vacation versus, I think that's a great summer.
Thank you.
Kip and Faith, thank you very much. Now move into discussion items. First discussion item is the 2017-18 tentative budget update.
Just a brief update for the board on the status of the tentative budget. The budget was posted back in July to that in the public hearing. Some things we're still continuing to monitor before we bring the final budget to the board for approval here in September. Obviously, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, state funding is still a big issue. We're waiting to see what's going to happen there under the Senate Bill 1. We are in mind to get $300,000 more than we got the year before. For the purpose of our budget, we've kept it pretty flat with what our totals were as far as 2017. So we're continuing to monitor that. Obviously, we're hopeful that a budget will get, if something gets approved here sooner or later. For us, it wouldn't become an issue until the spring, but I don't think it would definitely not get, can't imagine it would get that far. So we continue to watch what's going on down in Springfield. As Dr. Schuler mentioned, or may have mentioned, the Senate overrode the governor's A V on the Senate Bill 1. Under his plan, it has been published, we did get published information from Bisbee that under the governor's plan, it'd be $300,000 more for a total of $600,000 in additional funding. But obviously, there's a veto on that already in the Senate and the House has 15 days to act from Monday to get that to us.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
That's like in first year or two, it's not permanent, right?
Right. And there's different nuances of the governor's mandatory veto versus what is in Senate Bill 1. So obviously, the Springfield has to work through all of that and get a budget in place for education, K-12. So we're continuing to monitor that. We're also looking at our Fed funds, Medicaid idea title. I know I just got some updates from Faith and Joy and I continue to discuss those revenue streams on the federal side. And then finally, another component of the state budget is on transportation. There was talk of that being more fully funded. That's not part of Senate Bill 1, that's not part of the evidence-based model. So we're hopeful that we could see an increase in that, especially because the cost went up when we bid it out a few years ago and cost is a factor in the reimbursement amount. So we're hopeful that that number gets, that allocation gets more fully funded. So that's something we continue to keep an eye on. On the expenditure side, obviously salaries and benefits. We will be updating salaries and benefits specifically on the admin salaries. If you recall, we did have a percentage increase in, based on the, our model for increase for admin. So we will be backing that out of the final budget as well as looking at the O and M budget as well for salaries. On the benefits side, we're continuing to, we've had open enrollment for our healthcare and we're waiting for our new enrollees and final numbers to come in and we'll have a review of that and make sure our benefit line item is appropriate for the budget. We plan on getting that too. I'm not sure if that's going to change that or not, but we're looking at it. We have seen some increase in enrollment on our plan, so we have to take that into account as well. Board approved lacrosse tonight, so obviously we have to put in a revenue stream and expenditure cost for that into the budget as well. So we'll be building the lacrosse, not only the revenues from the parent support, but also the expenditures to go along with the program. Finally, the TRS on behalf of state payment. The state has obviously a portion that they pay towards the pension for all school districts in TRS. And so they, they make that on behalf allocation for the district, but we, when we put it in our final budget, we carry that number in our budget as well and have done so for a number of years. So again, just a real brief summary, we're continuing to watch what's happening down in Springfield very closely. Dr. Schuler mentioned on August 10th, the Comptroller announced that she would be releasing the third quarter categorical payments from last year. That was about $2.6 million. Those funds came in on Monday, August 14th. That August 10th date was significant because that's when we normally would get our general state eight payments, which we haven't got. The next one is due on the 20th. I don't know what's going to happen with the fourth quarter categoricals. I'm guessing that we'll have to wait and see. For the purpose of our audit on an accrual basis, they pick up 60 days, so that third quarter categorical will be included in the audit that the board will receive probably in November. And we continue to wait and see what happens with the fourth quarter. That dollar amount is probably around 0.7. They still have not allocated the final bilingual payment in the budget, so we're waiting to wait and see where that goes. But, so we're probably looking at probably another $3 million that the state owes us for last year for that fourth quarter. So I know that was a quick run-through, but if there's any questions, I can answer.
What is the, I know we're not legislatively exempt, but when do we have to pass the budget?
We're required to pass it by the end of the first quarter of the year, which is September 30th, no later.
And we're on schedule to pass it September 13th. Correct. So there's a, there's a possibility, or a strong possibility, we might be approving that budget not knowing what the state funding situation is.
That's awesome.
That's a wonderful scenario.
We can always amend the budget.
Thanks, Bill. Next discussion item is the 2017-18 board goals. Dr. Schuler?
There was an attachment to the agenda item that captured, so at the last meeting, we had brought to the board some feedback around goals. Board members were encouraged to provide feedback, which you did, to comments or suggestions. I attempted to capture all of that feedback, put it into a chart for you that indicated what it was, the topic area that it applied to. And again, just my recommendation on how that item be handled at kind of the highest level. I think there were two items that came out, at least again, and our recommendation is full board goals, that being the S E L implementation, curriculum, and the facilities, early learning solution were the two board level goals. There were a number of items that came up that I've recommended be assigned to one of your committees for exploration during the year. A couple of the items that were mentioned are already on committee agendas. All of the discussion around the high school finals and what they're being used for are already active discussions that have been underway. And then there were some comments that I noted for when the Vision 2018 plan itself is renewed. There were some suggestions on things that... There were some suggestions on things that should come out of there, which I think certainly noted when the whole plan gets updated. So I don't know, Roma, where you want to kind of go in terms of board discussion around around this?
I have given it some thought, Dr. Schuler. It's a lengthy document. I'm wondering if individual board members can give you their feedback on this review via email, text, phone calls over the next couple of weeks and see if we can get this refined. I'm sure there's some questions board members have. When I went through, I had some questions. I know I might have to pursue, and then bring it up again at the next board meeting.
Can you repeat what the four goals were? I think I missed two.
Two.
Two goals, so SEL.
SEL.
ECC.
Yeah.
This is, okay. Well, just a general question. We have a kind of a general timeframe, and we're going to look at Vision 2018 and make it Vision 20 something else.
Yeah, so one of the, I mean, I think the place where I think you start in terms of renewal of the strategic plan is start with the dashboard metrics. Ultimately, your measurable outcomes, I think, need to be the first thing that gets reviewed and updated, and that then, I think, drives the specific strategy and areas that you want to approve, improve in light of that. My recommendation to you on that is that the Teaching and Learning Committee take oversight of that throughout the year. It just so happens that Faith and two other individuals who are working on an internship project, I've got working on that item anyway, looking at all of those teaching and learning metrics in preparation of bringing that. So I guess, Brad, big picture, I anticipate by the end of this school year as a full board, you likely will have renewed, reviewed those dashboard metrics, perhaps considered any changes that you want to make, especially to the student learning portion of the dashboard metric. And then I think that can drive a timeline probably through fall of 2018 for ultimately updating the plan itself. So that by the end of the 2018 calendar year, ideally, you have a new strategic plan looking out as far as you would like for us to look out.
Do we have an item on here, I'm looking forward to, about the, you know, we talked about it today with the La Crosse, with the reevaluation of the fee structure. Is that on there somewhere? Inspired?
Yeah.
Diana, can you email that document to us?
Jim, it's on the first page. I think the item is, "Supports system to ensure co-curricular programming impacts the student learning experience," and it says aside to the Finance Committee as part of the review of the Student Activities Support Piece.
Second from the bottom. I can understand a little bit. Okay. You all received the monthly financial reports and a FOIA report. Are there any reports from board members?
I had one, and I'll make it really quick. I did attend the Senate Bill 1 session Saturday with our three, bar two, plus one of Grant Worley from Naperville about Senate Bill 1, and I'll just characterize it as my perception, a lot of finger pointing at Chicago and quite a lot of anger in the crowd towards.
Representative.
I wasn't going to say that, but.
Representative. Are there other reports from board members? Hearing none. Topics for future discussion, of course, the 2017-18 budget, as well as the master, facility master plan, the next steps. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for September 13th, 2017, at 7:00 PM at Hubble Middle School. Do we have field public comments on our agenda items? We do have a closed session, therefore I ask for a motion and second to adjourn to the closed session for the purpose of discussing what the negotiating matters between the public, private, and employees or the representatives of deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes or employees pursuant to five ILCS 120/2 so far as the SEC. Do we have such a motion? Move by Mr. Paulson, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanlon. Professor, would you please call a rule?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes, the motion for, to move to closed session is approved. We are hereby adjourned to closed session.